Okay, seeing that it's seven o'clock, I'll open up the meeting of the Town and Halifax Planning Board, taking place at 499 Plymouth Street in Halifax. Today's date is Thursday, April 17th, 2025. The meeting started at 7:00 PM here in the Great Hall at the Town Hall in Halifax. The planning board meeting, just so everyone knows, is being recorded by Area 58 and can be reviewed on YouTube. Okay, I'll accept a motion to accept the agenda for tonight's meeting as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Unanimous. Tonight, at tonight's meeting, we have Rick Mary, Tom Millius, myself, Bert Gainer, Amy Troop, and Mr. Elliott is absent for this evening. Okay, let's start off with our public hearing that's scheduled for seven o'clock. We're going to be reviewing the proposed zoning bylaw amendments that will come before the annual town meeting, and I'll ask Mr. Bruno.
Do you want me to open the hearing?
That's a good idea, yes. All the votes to open the hearing, the public hearing.
I motion to open the notice of public hearing for the Halifax Planning Board, which will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 17th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Great Hall at Halifax Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Massachusetts, 02338, to review zoning bylaw amendments for town meeting. The texts comprising the proposed zoning bylaw amendments may be inspected at the office of the Town Clerk, Halifax Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Massachusetts, 02338.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll ask for a voice vote to open the public hearing. Rick?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Amy?
Yes.
Unanimous. Okay, yes, John.
So, John Bruno, I am the chairman of the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee and a member of the Board of Selectmen. I'm just going to give a brief introduction, and then what we have, another brief, relatively brief PowerPoint that the town administrator has put together that will highlight for the public and for you the changes to the bylaw that we're proposing. We also have with us tonight Attorney Rick Huxham, who is town council, who was intimately involved in helping us come up to where we are right now. So, for anyone who thinks that this is something that's coming out of the blue, a little history is important. The original zoning bylaw review committee was started in 2013, and it's been in existence ever since then. It's had a couple of changes to the membership over the course of time. It's had various members have been on it and off it over the course of time. In 2023, in the winter of 2023, the Board of Selectmen was looking into this committee to see where it was, what was happening, and what we were told was really nothing had happened, that there was difficulty getting a quorum because of the requirements of various departments that were on the committee. And again, this is a committee created by the Board of Selectmen anyway, so we could do what we wanted with it. In any event, the board at that time, in July of 2023, reconstituted it, made it much smaller, and made it five voting members, including just one from the Board of Selectmen just to act as chairman to keep the process moving, and also having as non-voting members the building inspector, the town administrator, and legal counsel. And the idea being that we would have no excuse for not putting resources into this to make sure that we could actually accomplish something. Obviously, this is an important issue. I mean, it's been on the table now for 12 years, and I think that the town would be better served if we could just get past this. And so, the zoning bylaw has been reviewed in detail from start to finish, and we've made some changes to it. A lot of those changes are having to do with kind of reorganizing it, alphabetizing some of the definitions, relatively minor type changes like that. There are four different changes that Cody's going to go over with the PowerPoint so that she get a good feel for it. And that's where it stands. So, it's our hope that we can bring the towns' zoning bylaws into, up to standards, whatever the standards are at the time. You'll hear that there have been some changes to the law that have to be incorporated into our zoning bylaw, and that's part of this. And that the idea was to make the zoning bylaw a little bit easier for people to work with. So, with that said, I'll turn it over to Cody to give you folks explanation as to what the changes are.
John, I just have a quick question. I know if it goes before the annual town meeting, maybe I'm going at this too soon, not quite yet, but you know what? Of course, it has to go through the Attorney General's Office, the Secretary of State once it passes and whatnot. Are, I guess maybe it's a question for Rich, are we legally, language-wise, up to snuff and everything okay as it's presented to us now?
Well, as far, well, it hasn't been to the Attorney General, yeah. We have not asked them for any consultation, which I don't think they would give us anyway. But we have been careful as we've gone along over the last year and a half, almost two years now, in trying to put into the zoning bylaw any changes that we think that the state requires. You'll hear about ADUs, for example, those small dwelling houses type things, which are now a state law and now are incorporated into bylaw. So, that type of thing is there. We are convinced that it's perfectly legal, everything's in order, but again, that's-
And Mr. Huxham feels comfortable with it, too.
And Mr. Huxham can give you some detail on that.
Yes, and that was really part of the purpose of the endeavor. That was really part of the purpose of the whole endeavor was to do that, you know, to make sure everything was complied with state law and was up to snuff, as you say.
Because I did notice on several of the different items and articles that were in there, changes, it does refer to comply with the new state law date section and whatnot.
Right.
So, at least we got a handle on it.
Right, and as John mentioned, probably the prime example of that is the accessory dwelling unit aspect of it, which is required, you know, because of the change in state law.
Great, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I have a question. I was wondering, in 2013 or '12, when this committee was, or, yeah, the bylaw committee review committee was put together, was it a vote at town meeting to create that? Can we have that reviewed because?
This is just a committee set up by the Board of Selectmen in 2013 as an advisory committee to the Board of Selectmen. So, you'll notice that the proposed zoning bylaw changes are proposed by the Board of Selectmen, that's where it comes from. The zoning bylaw committee is just advisory, that's all. I mean, we have, everything was done in following open meeting laws, everything's been recorded, it's been minutes, the whole deal's been followed correctly, but it's-
You recorded the meetings? Were they put on Area 58, sir?
It was recorded. I don't know if it was livestreamed, I don't know about that, no.
No, you don't know?
I don't know.
Okay. It should have been on Area 58 because a lot of us in town would have liked to have seen it.
It's available, the meetings, they're open meetings, the agenda's posted. We have had people come that have come to the meetings a couple of times because they were interested in things that we were talking about, so it's a public meeting. But again, the purpose of the zoning bylaw committee was to do the groundwork and then to make a proposal, and then Board of Selectmen would be the ones that are proposing the changes.
Right, and didn't you make it so that meetings were happening before work got out and one of the five members couldn't make it to a lot of the meetings due to that?
Say that again?
One of your members could no longer make it to the meeting due to the fact that you kept planning them before the 5:00 PM time that he could make it?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay.
All right, why don't we move on if you wouldn't? Cody, if you could please?
Thank you. So, as John and Rich already mentioned, you know, really scope of these revisions are to ensure zoning's compliant with Massachusetts general law and any recent case law, to create clarity in the reading and understanding of the zoning bylaw. We've heard from several members of the community that our bylaw is challenging to read for the average person, so we wanted to make it so a resident or potential business coming in can look at our bylaw and hopefully understand it a little bit more. And then really remove areas of contradiction throughout the bylaw, maintain consistency. And then, just one thing that really that's important to stress here is there are no changes of the underlying zoning or the zoning map in any of these proposals. It's really, I'll go over the changes of substance. Beyond that, it's grammatical, it's cleaning things up, clarifying things, definitions, things like that. So, those notable revisions, the first one is in 167-7D subsection 11. This would allow mixed commercial and residential uses in the B Commercial and Business District by special permit at the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, right now, mixed use development is not allowed, so this would allow by a special permit by the ZBA. 167-13, this simplifies our exterior signs section. There was, in the current bylaw, there's a subsection that allows for signs to be increased by 25% for every 100 feet of setback off the road. So, in our conversation with the building commissioner, this came up because Walmart, for instance, that's set off the road several hundred feet, could have a sign that was like 1,000 square feet or something, if I recall, John and Rich. It was massive. So, it really clarified that language because there are set two different parameters in the current bylaw. So, it removed that 100-foot setback by, you know, 25% there. And 167-19, this is a-
Can I ask a question? Was there any other even little small changes within the sign bylaw?
Yeah, I mean, there's changes throughout the bylaw to several things, such as grammatical wording, but the change of substance in the bylaw that actually changes regulation is just the removal of that 25% for every 100 feet off the road.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome. 167-19, this is a totally new section. This is a blighted properties. The intent of this is to protect and preserve public safety, security, and quiet enjoyment of occupants of butters and neighborhoods. It requires all residential, commercial, and industrial property owners to properly maintain any sort of blighted or foreclosing properties, and it regulates the maintenance of blighted and/or foreclosing residential, commercial, industrial properties to prevent blighted and unsecured properties. 167-20, this is the site plan review requirements. I assume this will be particularly of interest to the planning board, considering, you know, you oversee the site plan review process. Within that, there were some improvements to create efficiencies in the review process. I'm going to get more into depth into that further on in the presentation. And then, as Attorney Huxham had mentioned, the accessory dwelling unit section, which was really a requirement to comply with the current state law, that was effective in February. So, even if the town chooses not to update that section of our bylaw, it's happening now anyways, so it's going to continue to happen outside of our bylaw if we, even if this is not updated. So, site plan review, in July of 2024 of last year, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities notified the town that our current site plan review bylaw really should be looked at by town council. They had some concerns. Their exact language is that we should consult with town council to ensure that this section aligns with existing case law concerning planned reviews for as-of-use rights. This is classic, the state, right, not very clear in what their concerns are, but just telling us, maybe you should look at it. So, obviously, that prompted a review by town council and the zoning bylaw review committee. With that, there was this revised section that is being presented, and it really, it's a positive attribute for the planning board and for the projects or anyone applying for or going through site plan review. Ultimately, it sets up different levels of a project, right? Because if you have a smaller project, the idea is not necessarily a big commercial project. It doesn't necessarily need to go through the same high-level review as if you're having a huge project come into town. So, it sets up major or minor projects. Minor projects would be any new building or construction containing 1,000 gross square feet, a floor area up to but not including 2,000 square feet. Expansion of an existing building resulting in an increase of floor area of 1,000 square feet, but not beyond 2,000. Construction or expansion of parking area resulting in three to five new parking spaces, and any changes to loading areas, dumpsters, exterior lighting, major landscaping features, or accessory structures. That falls under that minor project review. And then, under major project, ultimately is everything, everything else. So, anything beyond 2,000 square feet, whether it's a new construction or an expansion of an existing building. Construction expansion, alteration of parking areas in six or more parking spots, grading, regrading of land, development over an area of 5,000 square feet or more, development of 7,500 square feet or more of impervious surface or more than 15% of the lot area. So, really, everything else that would be kind of a larger project, but it goes through that higher level review. And then, the other, like I mentioned, accessory dwelling units, really bringing us into compliance with state law. We didn't go any further than the requirements of the state law, but it would allow these accessory dwelling units as-of-right in AR and B zoning districts, and would be allowed by a special permit in the C zoning district. Maximum of one accessory dwelling unit per lot cannot be larger than half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. Can have no more than two bedrooms. Tom?
I had a question.
Sure.
When you said maximum of one ADU per lot, didn't the state also allow for more than one with a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals, or did I misread that? Not that I'm advocating for it, but I just wanted to-
That's not part of the required part of the change in state law. Okay. It's just at least one per lot in residential zoning districts of the size that Cody mentioned.
Is that particular to every town? I'm sorry, you don't? Is that particular, like what Tom was talking about, if there were two, that would be a change that, say, a town could do on their own?
Yes.
If they wanted to, but to meet the state requirement, it's got to be at least the one?
Right, a town could do more, could be more lenient regarding them, but they have to be at least what the state law requires.
I may have misread it. It may say that the town can't adopt it if they so choose with special permit from the ZBA.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's important to note that all of these accessory dwelling units, you know, in the bylaw, they still have to comply with all of their requirements, such as onsite water, septic disposal, et cetera. Single-family residents with an ADU must comply with fire separation regulations for two-family dwellings, and again, setback and dimensional requirements still must be met for these ADUs, we're not changing any of that. So, like I said, in all of these revisions, there is nothing that changes any underlying zoning, no dimensional standards. It really is beyond these changes that I mentioned.
No lot size requirement?
No changes, correct. And like I said, those are the changes of substance. If you look through the bylaw, everything else is very similar to what was there before with, like I said, exceptions of, you know, rewording definitions, right? We had a long discussion in the zoning bylaw review committee of basement versus cellar. There were two definitions in the bylaw of basement versus cellar, and they were referred to in different areas of the bylaw. Really meant the same exact thing, but again, one of those things where it's inconsistent, so if you're reading it, you're saying, what, does one mean one thing and one mean the other, but they were used in the same fashion throughout. So, those are the types of cleanup that occurred throughout the bylaw. Yeah, that's, you know, like John, myself, and Rich are here. If you have any questions, we can certainly answer them.
What about the site plan review and whatnot? Is that all? I mean, we've got a couple more pages with, were there changes done to the site plan review?
Yes.
Yeah, so I just went through the site plan review. That was, that section was revised to create the two, the two project basically types, to two tiers of projects, the major versus minor, in setting thresholds to, you know, what constitutes a minor project, what constitutes a major project. This was a section that was used from another community, similar size of Halifax, and again, in Attorney Huxham's review, should be compliant with the law and address the, whatever the concerns with the state were. We don't know exactly what they were because they just said that you should look at it. They felt it was inconsistent with current case law, so it did need some updating.
Cody, what was the oldetown?
Thank you.
It was, is it Newberry? Newbury.
Newbury Port.
It was either, I think it was just Newbury. Newbury, Rich? Yeah, just Newbury, not Newbury Port.
Okay, I'll ask the members of the board, anybody have any questions that I'd like to bring forward?
I think it was pretty cut and dry. I was looking for glitches, but, and it's long overdue to clarify some of this stuff. I mean, having tried to read it myself for 23 years, it wasn't exactly the easiest thing to do. And everybody, there's always going to be various interpretations of any bylaw, but the closer you can zero it in, the less aggravating it is for everybody. I think it's a great effort to try to clean this stuff up.
Rick?
Do you have something?
You have anything?
No.
You don't have any?
No, I actually had a couple brought up, you know, that I brought up before. I know back 100 years ago when I first got on the, on the zoning board, it was in the 80s, we had tried to update them with the Old Colony Planning Council. We were going over to Brockton once in a while, and again, that was seat of our pants type, then you try to get a little bit of the other towns, and we probably created some of the problems that Tom was referring to, but made the effort anyway to try to bring it up to date.
Yeah, no, and I think, you know, weren't necessarily problems, generally speaking, we have a pretty good zoning bylaw, and that's why there aren't really changes of substance in the bylaw, but it is incredibly difficult for, to read and understand, particularly where it's contradicting in some spots, and it, you know, you have definitions that are going against each other. So, the zoning itself, that's why there's really not a lot of changes of substance that recommended by the committee, but really just trying to make it so, you know, the community, we want the community to be able to understand this, and, you know, the staff too, right, a building commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, it's important that they're able to understand and understand where to enforce these things. And so, like Mr. Millius said, it's not, oh, this is my interpretation, like, there's always going to be that, but let's narrow that down as much as possible so it isn't, well, I interpret it this way, you interpret it this way. No, it's pretty clear, this is how it is.
The sign bylaw is certainly an education. You know, it's, it's pretty lengthy. And like you said, you know, sometimes you read it one way and you can read it completely different than somebody else does, and the more accurate and clarified it can become. I'll open it up to anybody. Do you have, I asked you if you had a question?
Yeah, I do, I have questions. Okay. And, right, all right, so, right, Article 2, Section B, number 4. MBTA Communities, Multifamily Overlay District, obviously, this is a typo, and that needs to be absolutely removed.
So, I did send the, did Danielle pass it along to you? Do you have the one that I, that's on your, that I-
I just got this on Thursday.
Okay.
Of last week, so 94 pages of going over them and comparing them to our current bylaw as a lot.
Absolutely.
So, no, this is the one that I got last week.
Okay, so, it has been posted for the more than two-week requirement, that's a legal requirement.
Right, but the planning board should have received it back in March when it was completed so that we could have actually gone over things more diligently instead of in the last seven days.
It was posted with your public hearing notice, which met the at least 14-day requirement.
Right.
So, we acknowledge that was a Scribner's error, and in the copies on your seats tonight, that is removed. And also, there was a revised copy posted online. It was just a simple, like you said, a Scribner's error that hadn't been removed.
Another one of the issues or questions that I have gets into the Table of Use Regulations, where it crosses off home business or professional office-studio conducted by a resident of the premises, accessory use, C 167-7D 11, added 511, 1998, and it's completely crossed out. I would love an explanation of why we would be crossing out the availability for home business and professional office and studio in somebody's home, since I think COVID made it so that a lot of people stay home and work, so this is interesting one for me.
What page is that on? I'm sorry, it was 167-
Sorry, then I remembered. It's the-
So, yeah, Attorney Huxham has the answer to that.
167-76?
Well, it's the, so, 1, 2, 3, 4. I'm just helping Bert find it. 1, 2, 3, fourth page of Table Use.
Okay, thank you.
So, that was an instance where we consolidated a couple of related sections. It's actually still in the Table of Use Regulations, customary home occupation conducted by a resident of the premises, accessory uses. So, it's not eliminated, it was really just consolidated with another section and moved to a different spot.
Where?
I'm looking at it, it's in the Table of Use Regulations, customary home occupation conducted by a resident of the premises. So, it's alphabetical, we also changed that to completely alphabetical.
Okay, I have it now. Give me a second to compare. Is there a reason that the word "studio" is taken out of this? Like, because somebody might have an art studio, or they might have a yoga studio in their house, or something of that nature? Is there a reason why "studio" is taken out of that? And can it be put back in? You know what I mean?
No, I think that it was, it was just left as customary home occupation conducted by a resident on the premises. I mean, a studio would be included in that if it's a part of the, you know, part of that use.
I just think that it would be nice to have it clarified and not left out because a studio isn't an office and an office isn't a studio. And so, I think that point is a good point to make.
It doesn't say "office" in here. It says customary home occupation conducted by a resident of the premises, accessory uses. So, it doesn't say just an office.
And the very next one, Cody, said home business or professional office/studio conducted by a resident of the premises. So, wouldn't that include, no, office/studio?
Where is that?
It's the very next one, right below customary-
I don't have that one.
Oh, that's because it's the current.
I think you're, yeah, you're looking at the current bylaw, yeah.
Do you want me to wait on that one for a minute? Do you want to look at it? You're good. So, I would recommend that studio stay in that, just to be clear. Since we are doing this to make things clear, we should probably consider that to be clear. Medical marijuana treatment center as a primary accessory use is crossed off. I just wanted to have clarification of that because that's crossed off in all zones.
We did away with the differentiation between medical and just marijuana, so it now just falls under the marijuana establishments. And the reason for that being, you know, right now, you have, the retail marijuana, right, is allowed, you know, we have a couple of different retail marijuana establishments. As the zoning is currently written, they actually can't do any sort of medical because there's a differentiation. So, the medical came before the retail.
So, we're removing it completely?
We're just leaving it as, yeah, remove that section to just, it's marijuana. So, it doesn't differentiate between medical marijuana or retail marijuana, it's now all just marijuana establishments.
Okay. And also, I just wanted to make note that when we accepted the marijuana establishment law a few years back in 2020, it had a 3% sales that would come back to the town, and that is removed.
That's incorrect, we still get a 3% sales tax.
No, we actually made, remember, we made an adjustment to one of their contracts to rely on- to eliminate.
So that's a 3% impact fee.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking.
But that does not affect the, the town meeting vote was the 3% local option on sales tax.
Right.
Which we still get. We do still get that.
We actually had to remove it from Flower &amp; Soul's contract this year.
That's not part of the contract. The 3% local tax is a state regulation that the town adopted, and we still receive that. There was an additional 3% community impact fee that was deemed illegal by the state that were removed from the contracts. But the 3% local tax that town meeting adopted is still received by the town.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Multifamily dwellings crosses out apartments and then just puts multifamily development and makes it a special permit in, well, it still is, making a special permit in the agricultural residential business and conservancy. So multifamily development, and then the large increase in our bylaw of having multifamily development is, AKA, like an MBTA zoning overlay. But because you have multiple pages of multifamily being allowed in the Town of Halifax that previously wasn't, so concerned about that.
I don't think that's accurate. We don't add any, that was not added. We, like I said, clarified things, but we did not expand, you know, allowing multifamily housing throughout the town where it's not currently allowed. That is not the case.
Where it's currently not allowed? Okay, well, there's a few clarifications that I think need to be read over by everybody on this board seriously, because there's a lot of information that is different now. And I think we need more time to go over that.
Okay. Is that a question? Was there a question?
I'm just saying. Yep. Why in Section 167, 7, 5C, are we making, we're adding in an individual building or in the aggregate, in more than one building on a single lot, are allowed by special permit of the zoning board of appeals, and crossing out the planning board? Why would we be removing the planning board as that special permit decider?
Yeah, so there, it was one of the items throughout the bylaw that was inconsistent. There were some areas where just randomly it was the planning board, some it was the zoning board of appeals. So it was the recommendation of the group to make it more consistent for these types of special permits to be granted by the zoning board of appeals as the special permit granting authority.
One of the reasons that it was in site plan review has to do with the fact that a 15,000-square-foot building that is sitting on a site has to be set correctly on the site and have the correct setbacks, which is not what zoning board of appeals goes over.
So site plan review is not removed. This is special permit.
Understood. But a 15,000-square-foot building where it goes into on a plan would be most suitable at the planning board due to the fact that it's a major part of a site plan. If you're putting a 15,000-square-foot building on a property, so now you're going to make it so that they have to go to the zoning board of appeals to get a special permit and do a site plan in front of the planning board, instead of making it simpler, which would be both granted by the planning board.
Okay. Is that a question?
No, I'm informing you. So that actually is...
I'm well aware of the bylaw. Been part of the process for the past two years.
Well, good. But I'm refreshing and going over all the finer points that maybe our residents would like to know.
Sure.
So you could be very familiar with it, but I don't think that the residents are. This is 93 pages of changes.
It's certainly not 93 pages of changes.
It's very different.
Okay. So again, this does not take away site plan review from the planning board. I just want to be very clear about that. A special permit is required. It is given, the special permit would be granted by the ZBA. You're absolutely correct on that, but the planning board still, it still have to go through site plan review. The change in there with the aggregate, one of the reasons was before, there was no, it was not defined if it was aggregate or not, right? So the, this is one of those where up for interpretation. If you have two separate buildings that are less than 15,000 square feet individually, but aggregate are more than 15,000, does it require it? It's up for interpretation. That's why we're very clear in the aggregate. So if you do have, whatever the buildings are, if they are total 15,000 square feet or more, it triggers that special permit.
Right. And it's all going to affect aggregate, and size of buildings is all going to affect stormwater management. And again, that is part of the site plan, not a zoning board of appeals variance, which is agreeing on uses and things of that nature. So you're giving...
There's no variance. We're not talking variances.
I understand. It's a special permit. But again, most of it goes to stormwater that is planning board. So you're giving issues over to the zoning board of appeals because maybe they're appointed and not elected.
Stormwater is given by conservation. Stormwater permits are granted by conservation.
We also have some part of that.
Right. But the actual permits are granted by conservation.
Tom, you have a question?
Yeah, I was just going to say, all they're going to the zoning board of appeals for is for a special permit for the aggregate size of the building and nothing else, correct?
That's, that is correct.
Just trying to clear that.
Right. It still goes to the planning board for site plan review.
Whenever everything else comes to the planning board.
Right. It just makes an extra step, though, because now, instead of just going to the planning board, they're going to the zoning board of appeals and the planning board for a site plan.
But they're not going to, I'm sorry, but they're not going to the zoning board of appeals for a site plan or anything, only for the size, the aggregate size of the building.
Again, the idea with consistency was, there were many other aspects where the ZBA was giving out special permits for, you know, various things within the bylaw. So the zoning bylaw review committee had recommended to make it consistent. So if you have an applicant coming in, where do I go for this? Well, geez, let me try to figure that out. It's consistent now. Zoning board of appeals for the special permit there.
So crossing out planning board, which clearly tells them where they would go, is less confusing by crossing it off and putting zoning board of appeals, because you just sort of...
Correct. It's consistent.
Honestly, Cody, it said that you get a special permit for the planning board there. So neither end of that.
Again, consistency, as I've mentioned, one of the purposes of this is...
But they might not have had to go to the zoning board of appeals at all. So now you're adding a layer. Anyway, next one. Mixed-use commercial and residential use is allowed in B Commercial and Business District by special permit in the zoning board of appeals. So we haven't allowed mixed use in Halifax. So to just go over this really quickly, this is a major new section.
I mentioned, I did mention that as a change of substance.
Very lightly. So basically, both commercial and residential uses on one lot may be allowed in the B Commercial and Business District by special permit granted by the zoning board of appeals as special permit granting authority, where the zoning board of appeals finds that all requirements of the 167, 7D are satisfied. So 167, 7D is... Just as a note, this is a lot to go over in seven days.
Again, Amy, it was posted online. It's a legal requirement. Whether you consume it or not, we cannot change. It was, the information was provided.
Nice.
Thank you.
So the mixed-use development would be going to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit?
That is correct.
For a multi, a mixed-use, multi-development that you're going to, so that, but they'd still come to the planning board for site plan review.
If it triggers the site plan review, absolutely.
So it's another layer in the process. We have the zoning board of appeals that needs to give them a variance to do something. But we're also, just so that Halifax knows, currently, right now, we don't allow mixed-use development. So this is brand spanking new.
And just to clarify, this is, that would not be a variance from the ZBA. That's a special permit.
Right. And it's another layer.
We've allowed mixed use in the Town of Halifax by special permit. The property, the strip mall across the street from Our Lady of the Lake Church, it's got the commercial on the bottom and residential up top.
No.
Yes, there was. There was a special permit issued for that.
But that was also pre-existing, non-conforming.
And it also was taken away about 10 years ago, somehow. Do you want to get into that?
I don't know the specifics of, again, we're not talking specific parcels here. We're just talking the zoning, but I think...
There is no mixed use in the Town of Halifax unless they were pre-zoning.
As of now, it is not allowed in the zoning bylaw. So like, as I mentioned, that is a change of substance that would allow that by special permit. Correct?
Right. The only other ones that were ever around before were done pre-zoning. And again, that was taken away about 10 years ago from that property. So that's wrong.
I'd have to research that. It was taken away. I'd have to look into that.
Okay. Do it.
It's irrelevant for this discussion in any other...
Yeah, I think it's important to, to Ms. Troop's point. I mean, if there is additional questions, concerns, this is, our zoning bylaw is very thorough. It's very in-depth. So, you know, we can certainly, if you have questions, you can follow up with us.
No, this needs to be so that people can watch it. There are people who watch these hearings that might not be at the meeting. So we're not going to just scooch it over so that it's in a private email or a conversation. All of these things need to be done publicly so that people understand.
You're the one saying that you weren't prepared to ask the questions tonight. You thought it was a lot to digest. So I'm offering an alternative.
Oh, I've been, I've been doing this for seven days, Cody.
Good.
Okay. So, density regulations, let's see, that's pretty much the same. What was I, multifamily. So there's two different areas of multifamily development. One might be older, but we also have the mixed use in. So that's, that's a little... Okay. Transient accommodations, is that word transient new to our bylaw?
Can you reference where you're speaking of?
Yeah, we have it just above Article 5, which is exterior signs on the top of that page, assuming they're printed the same, because you said that maybe there might have been some changes in the one that you left us today.
No, that was only, that Scribner's error with the MBTA zoning that was changed in the one today.
Okay, we, okay, so that is also, we don't have transient accommodations. And then back in our use table, we had another reference to transient in there. Okay, last page of the use table. We have transient accommodations, tourist homes, but not including overnight cabins, motels, or hotels, special permit in the agricultural residential area. That's a new, a new section, sorry, phrase within our use table. Transient accommodations. Do you see where I am?
I do. We can look at the existing bylaw, but that was not something, a point to add anything there. Again, this was, the Table of Use Regulations is primarily just alphabetized in the, but can certainly look at that. I don't...
Well, it's in there. And I will double-check to see that it wasn't in this one, in the current bylaw.
167, what?
The Table of Use Regulations.
Regulations.
Is that what you're referring to? Tourist homes, but not including overnight?
Yep. It doesn't have the word transient in it. Is that correct?
That's, I don't see it there.
It doesn't have the word transient.
167, 7, page 22.
I want all transient to be removed from this bylaw. Yeah, the word transient. Transient accommodations. Think about what that means. And it was referring to the MBTA law.
Did they highlight all the changes in there?
Sometimes. Like, they're like purple and sometimes a little eye-talissee, sometimes a little bolded. It's not really clear.
So transient, in this case, is, it just, you notice the slash there. Tourist homes, overnight cabins, motels, or hotels. But we can certainly remove that.
I would recommend that.
Not looking to add any sort of use or anything. It was defining it in a broader sense for tourist homes.
I don't think that we've wanted a broader sense in the Town of Halifax.
Okay.
So you're saying that the only part of the signed bylaw that was changed was the one that you highlighted, or was there something different?
So, Amy, actually, Mr. Bruno just brought up a point. In the current zoning bylaw, there is reference to transient accommodations.
But it's not in our use table. But he has it right here. We just found it.
It does say transient accommodations, let's see, it is, this is in the current 167, 12, C. Transient accommodations in all districts, 2,000 square feet of lot area shall be required for each room to be used by transient paying guests. This requirement shall be in addition to the minimum lot area requirements of the district for any other use. So it is referenced in the, in the current bylaw.
But it was never in our use table, and we've never been allowed to do any of these. So maybe the way to clean it up would be to take that part out and take it out of the use table, where it wasn't before. It wasn't in the use table before, so we can take that part out.
Yeah. I mean, again, that's not me with the bylaw. You can make that recommendation. If the board of selectmen want to make an amendment at town meeting, they certainly can. Or if anyone wants to make an amendment at town meeting, that's certainly, you're right.
That was my next question, was if it, if it went on the town meeting floor, amendment, again, would be proposed, voted on?
Correct.
And then amended?
Yes.
Well, I agree with you 100%. But I think part of the reason of having a public hearing like this is to get that input. So if, if there are suggestions that should be taken into consideration for changes or amendments or rewording or whatever, we can do that. And then when we hopefully come to an agreement, that's how we'll propose it. So it's not, you know, this isn't, this isn't meant to be antagonistic at all. This is meant to do something that's positive, which is what we're trying to do, something positive, something beneficial for the town, something clearer. And it's not meant to be antagonistic. And again, everybody knows the bylaws need to be adjusted. It's been that way for 12 years, even longer, probably. So if there are issues of, you know, wording or whatever, you know, that's what we want to hear. We're ready to hear it. And the zoning bylaw committee can meet again or whatever, and we can make whatever adjustments are necessary. It's not...
But at this point of time, before town meeting, it can't be changed or re-advertised, or it would have to be done on the floor?
We can't change the warrant because it's already in print.
That's my question.
And it's already been approved. We can amend it, obviously.
Right, on the floor.
As long as the moderator figures it's within the scope, which we don't see any discussion here that's like so far out that we wouldn't probably be able to. But again, the whole purpose of a public meeting or a public hearing is to get input and have discussion on it. So we're happy to hear that. And if anything is pointed out, we don't, we don't, I don't think anybody on that committee thinks they have all the answers by any means. I think we did the best we could with a lot of help from the building inspector and from the town council and from the town administrator to do a job for the town. That's what we're trying to do. So we're welcome comments. So we're, we're welcome comments. If you have comments or suggestions that need to be addressed, we'll do it. It's not a big deal.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Brummel. Anything else, Amy?
Yep. So, in a state law's I, planning board is the special permit granting authority. Each submission to the board should and will be considered on its own merit and specifically, uh, specific applicability. The plans generated for consideration should strictly adhere to the criteria set forth for plans not requiring approval. 235.6 of the Halifax Code. Deleted, oh, sorry, that's deleted 2018. I, I was wondering why I hadn't, my bad. So we again have, um, special permit granting authority and I, um, hold on. Actually, right at the top of it, special permit granting authority is now the Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals, and it's crossing out the planning board.
What, I'm sorry, what section are you in?
We are now in the aquifer protection zone. So the special permitting, um, is now again taken away from the planning board. So it's not like in these laws, okay? There was no pointing out who to go to. It's just clearly, no, we're going to take it away from the planning board, and we're going to give it to the zoning board of appeals. I, I really would like to understand why that's happening all over the bylaw. It states flat out that the planning board is the special grant, uh, special permit granting authority. Okay? And all, all throughout the bylaw, it's crossed out and given to the zoning board of appeals, which again, I will point out is an appointed board.
What type of special permit are we talking about?
I'm trying to find the section that Ms. Troop's referring to.
It's at the aquifer protection zone. And then in that same section, under J, it crosses off the failure of the special granting authority to take final action upon an application for a special permit within 90 days following the date of public hearing shall be deemed to be a grant of the permit applied for. Now, does that, so now, um, there's no deadline on that? But is that crossed out for the zoning board of appeals too in this? Or is it just crossed off in general?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Right. So you, in the aquifer protection zone? 167.60, one se- sorry, 167.17, aquifer and well protection? You can go one, two. I'm just making sure I'm not missing anything. Just give me one second. Pass all of the, um, charts. And then the next page, you have I, special grant, permit granting authority. And again, planning board is crossed out, again. And, um, zoning board of appeals is put in its place. And in J4, special permit granting authority is taken away. And then six, the complete section of failure by the special permit granting authority to take final action upon an application for special permit within 90 days following the date of public hearing shall be deemed to be a grant of the permit applied for, which is now just totally removed. So there's that 90 days now removed completely? And what would now the deadline be? Because for 45, site plan, for instance, is 45 days. If we don't keep our eye and it goes, then they get automatic constructive approval. What happens with this?
Attorney Huxley can speak to this, but I believe it was taken out due to inconsistencies with the law.
The, the, um, the deadline for, for granting or for deciding on special permit application would not change because that's in, um, the zoning act anyway. So, um, that wouldn't, yeah, chapter 48, I believe it's in section nine. The 90-day deadline for constructive approval is in state law, so-
Well, it would be nice though for the residents reading it to understand that because they, that would be a really clear way of telling anybody applying for something that they have 90 days instead of having to go to MGL law to find it. So I feel like it's clarity to have it in there. And pulling it out also would make it so that different zoning board members or planning board members wouldn't understand that there is a 90-day constructive approval. So that being said, I just think it should remain in. And I still am just going, oh, I thank you for that. I just think it should still be in. The zoning board of appeals replacing the planning board throughout this entire, um, new bylaw is not something small. And I think that, um, it's very, something that the town should be very aware of. On letter O, just above one, the new 167.18, um, are we taking out the water supply protection area map from our zoning bylaws?
It's right below, in P, water supply protection area map.
Yeah. Are we taking that map out of the zoning bylaws? And why would we do that?
No, what, what?
Because it looks crossed out here. Is that maybe just a printer?
It was O, and now it's just in P, water supply protection area map, so it's still in there. It was just a re-lettering.
Okay, thank you. Because it looks crossed out on this one?
Okay, yeah, it just must have been a printer, the way it printed, but it's still in there under P. You will be, after the planning board has their questions, the public, bill of, for public consumption.
Again, in 167, new 18, um, use restrictions, where, uh, we're giving it to the zoning board of appeals?
Sorry, 167.18 is wireless communication services districts?
Or it, or we're saying, yeah, so zoning board of appeals. Again. It appears that, um, the procedure for a special permit has a lot of, um, Xs through, um, that, I guess that's for wireless procedure. But there's a lot of crossing off, just as a note. I don't really think we can do much about that, unfortunately. 167.19, blighted properties. Sounds really good to have somebody be able to go around town and say, oh my God, these people have long grass, or they have trash over there. It sounds really good. But who's going to be that person that's going to go around and judge all the town? Who's going to do that? A zoning enforcement officer, health agent, chief police? We already have the ability that if there is a property that is foreclosed, it comes in, it gets registered. And then the bank tries to do what they can to get rid of it as quickly as they can. But then there are some people that are poor and might run through bad health, and they don't need to have harassment, maybe a little bit more help. So this blighted properties issue is, um, something that we brought up at town meeting. Maybe, I'm going to give it the five to seven-year box ago, and the town was against it. This is, um, definitely over that time period, but we have five pages, uh, or sorry, one, two, three, four, five pages of, um, basically control on blighted properties, which I find to be quite alarming. Violations, penalties, enforcement, um... It's, it's documented by the zoning enforcement officer. That's, that, so that you basic, basically are putting your condition in the hands of whoever the building commissioner is?
No, the, the bylaw is very specific. A, it defines, uh, blighted property. And then further in the bylaw, um, it also gets into some more specifics under maintenance requirements. So lo- long grass, you had mentioned, I, I don't see that anywhere in the bylaw.
Well, it's not specifically in there, but there isn't anything that is specifically in there.
There is, no, section A is very specific, actually. The premises not being adequately maintained and secured, um, without limitation to the following. Missing or boarded windows or doors, collapsing or missing walls, roof or floor, siding that is seriously damaged or missing, fire damage, a foundation that is structurally faulty, accumulation of interior furniture outside, garbage, trash, junk, hazardous materials, unmaintained pools or other sources of stagnant water, and violations of the sanitary code, inoperable cars, boats, motorcycles, or other inoperable machinery.
Or other refuse.
Or other refuse, right.
So what is other refuse?
Long lawn would not, because refuse is trash.
E. Cody Smith specifically says right there, "In a condition which poses a serious threat to safety, health, and general welfare of the town." They're also specific about the building itself, the structure, supported by columns of walls resting, which again, if, if could cause a serious public safety issue. I thought it was pretty specific, to be honest with you.
Well, I, I think that maintenance, um, is not specific. Some people's trash is other people's treasure. We have that. And it's just giving a lot of authority to the building inspector, which originally was put into place in order to help and guide residents, not really so much in force, but to make sure that a construction, um, heating contractor or somebody did their job right so that they wouldn't be screwed over. It wasn't to become control. And this, this is like control.
Absolutely. That position is a state fund, a state mandated requirement to a building commissioner, zoning enforcement officer. So that's exactly what the purpose of that position is.
Now, but that's not how they were originally installed. And as we keep going further and further into the future and putting more and more control into government, we're giving less and less control. So the idea of this is great if you're talking about a hoarder that has things all over their yard with oil and everything, but it really gets into, um, other avenues in this that are not specific. It charges tons of fees to people who already have issue. And we already have border health laws that make it so that if they have, um, rats, animals, and literally sanitary issues, it already gives the issue to get rid of that. So I'm just saying that I think that it is something that is being put into a, a zoning bylaw review that we'll just go over and correct a couple of things. I'm thinking that five pages of blighted property and how we can take them from people and fine people is really not what the town wants.
So just, just also to clarify that point, there's no mechanism for taking anyone's home or anything, uh, under this bylaw?
No, but I mean, once the fees start going on, but why do you have foreclosed property and mortgage properties involved in the same thing?
Foreclosed properties have to do with not paying a mortgage.
Right.
They don't have to do with not paying a fee related to a blighted properties bylaw.
No, but somebody who lives there might, they, if they start obtaining fees and they're already under the, under the, um, they don't have enough money to pay their bills, and now the town's fining them, it could be a form of bullying, which has happened in this town on several occasions. And it's not okay. So that, that is not okay. You could use the border health laws, and if they're getting foreclosed upon, I believe the bank's taking care of it and hoping somebody would sell off. We don't need to try and find revenue sources through that.
You know, so the, the intent, and Mr. Bruno can speak to this, but the intent was, we actually got a lot of feedback from the community that there's a lot of these properties that are, are this exactly, you know, have a lot of junk, trash in the yard?
I can imagine. Yeah, I can imagine the 12 of them.
Okay.
First offense, $50. Second offense, $100. Third offense and each subsequent offense, $150. Upon failure to comply with any order issued by this bylaw, the town may, in addition to other penalties and actions, bring legal action against the owner to require compliance with the order, including but not limited to seeking a court-approved receiver for the property in violation. The imposition of any fines shall be, not be construed to prevent the enforcement of other laws upon the premises or prevent the initiation of other enforcement measures or penalties. Failure to pay any fine arising from the enforcement of this bylaw shall constitute a debt in favor of the town. That would be, um, a municipal ability to take the house.
There would be a lea-
The town may place a lien on the property for such debt and/or initiate a civil action against the owner in a court of competent jurisdiction to recover the debt. And so, yeah, that would actually be the steps towards being able to take somebody's home from them for maybe something that was a maintenance issue, or maybe they thought that their antique table that they got for free off the side of the road, somebody else is calling it trash.
Okay, I understand.
But that's altogether different from, from what C. is saying.
It's the road that it can go down.
Which, for which the completed, uh, in which the condition which poses a serious threat to safety, health, and the general welfare of the town of Halifax.
Well, it doesn't-
It's a safety in opposing to, uh, health and welfare. That's altogether different from somebody's nice end table. You know, it's, uh, I, I think it's pretty specific, to be perfectly honest with you. It, uh, yes, John?
It's very general.
The town doesn't have any ability currently to deal with that type of a property. If it's a abandoned building-
Exactly.
With, uh, with, uh, that's just not being maintained. We have a couple in pro- in town, everybody knows where they are. And we have no ability to do anything about them because as long, in foreclosure, there is some provisions for that, but there's nothing else we can do. This is an issue that has come up, uh, multiple times, uh, in the last couple of years for do something about these buildings, whatever they are. And I don't, I'm not going to specify them right now because that's not appropriate. But that's, it's an issue, and we have no other ability to do anything. This gives us at least something to work with-
Right.
That we can, um, that the town can, um, if nothing more, encourage whoever owns the thing. And sometimes it's an absentee mortgagie, absentee lawyer, absentee owner, or something like that that doesn't really care that much, we can't do anything about it. So this is what it's meant to do. I think the, um, again, the, the whole purpose of this bylaw is, is to make things better for the town of Halifax. It's not, it meant as an aggressive back and forth on, why are you doing this? Why are you doing that? Why aren't you doing this? If you have suggestions to make this better, we're willing, we're, we want to hear them. That's what we're trying to do. But that's, but this, but this particular bylaw here, this is something that's come up from, for the last couple of years often, and we need to do something to control it. And that's why it's there. And that's why it's there. So.
Thank you.
You proved my point. Then we can get into the site plan review where it gets into breakdown of all these different thresholds, and it's not really that clear. It's very lengthy, it's hard for people to understand. When you had a site plan before and just came here, we were all very clear when it was an easier thing to just be like, oh, that's an easy change. We did that with many, but you were breaking it down and making it extremely difficult when it could just be all round up to one thing. They come here, we do a site plan, we do a modification, and that has been working. This is a very complex system put in by a North Shore town, and I don't really, it makes it more confusing. And that's what we're all stating as realtors across the state, tons of us who have been in for 20 years, the new bylaws, when they get a new bylaw, are less readable because they're too complex. It is pretty simple that if you know that you have to have a site plan, you go to the planning board, but when you have different variations, there's more interpretations to be made.
So the goal of this was, and I think, I appreciate you bringing up that point, because this exactly does make it clear that way there, it's not, well, this planning board thinks this project should trigger a site plan review, but you have a different membership in a board in the future and they don't think it should trigger a site plan review. This makes it very clear to the community what triggers the site plan review and at what level, for whatever project you're doing. That way there, it's not, well, so-and-so, no, they shouldn't have to go through site plan review, well, so-and-so should. It's very clear what projects trigger the site plan review and what that process is. It defines each level in length under the, so level one, which is the minor projects, have five different criteria. Level two, which are the major projects, have nine different criteria. And then it lays out the procedure for the site plan review. So not only does it give the applicant very clear what they can expect to go through the site plan review process, but also for planning board members, Ms. Trup, as you said, might not all be familiar with, you know, 40A or all the zoning bylaws. Well, a planning board member could open this up and read quite, you know, it's very clear, what is the process for a site plan review and to what level regarding the project? So it's very clear onto what the triggers are and what that process is.
But we're also allowing 1,000 square foot buildings to be built without any site plan at all. So if that's on a commercial lot and it goes onto a commercial lot, then nothing is being reviewed about where the fire trucks can go, how much parking is needed for that. So you're losing a whole lot of the site plan from this and that's.
No, so parking, so any parking three to five spaces.
Added, not, what about subtracted?
So construction of any would require that.
Which would mean added. So what about subtracted? So if you put it.
So if you're subtracted, then you would have had an initial permit, right, an initial site plan review, and if you're going to subtract, then you'd be in violation of your site plan review that initially was approved by the planning board.
I don't know, it's a little kind of sketchy, Harry. If you just put it all into the same place and we all know that the laws, like, so our site plan application used to spell out absolutely everything. Check off where you were looking for waivers and it went right along with what our actual bylaws are, and somehow that went away over the last six, seven months. When did it change and I mentioned it? I think it was October or November. So it made it difficult because now we don't have all of this in front of them and that was actually something that they could see in writing and have the application.
That's a great point, and it's not in the bylaw, so it's at the board's discretion. So if you have a different planning board, they can require different things.
I don't think the planning board changed that, I believe it was the building commissioner. Because it wasn't, it wasn't us, it was at least a board that voted.
But if it's, but if it's in the zoning bylaw, it's a requirement, and then it's very clear for the board and also clear for the applicants.
So you're saying it's in here now that that site plan application that we used to have is?
No, no, what I'm saying is the procedure is in here, the trigger and then the procedure.
We had the procedure in writing before and it was pretty simple.
In the bylaw, in the zoning bylaw? I don't believe the.
Yeah. It was in the application and it's pretty much right here. We could add to what we had before by stating what that application wasn't included in the zoning bylaw and that would have absolutely cleaned it up. But now we're making it like.
So what concern, it sounds like you have concerns with the procedure. Like Mr. Bruno said, certainly, you know, the point of this is feedback, so what in the procedure do you have concerns with so we can consider that?
Well, number one, it was made by, I don't think there was one planning board member that ever had.
No, no, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. What particularly in the procedure, in the proposed bylaw are you concerned with?
I will get to that, but I will say that a lot of this was not, there was not one planning board member sitting in the zoning bylaw review committee to actually go over any of this so that they had any experience to offer. There was not one. So I would, I don't even believe that there was any zoning bylaw expert on that committee at all. We had two finance committee people, we had one conservation person who couldn't make it any longer, we had John, we had you, which you've been bringing a lot of state document down to us.
No, I know what you mean, but our zoning enforcement officer is certainly an expert with zoning bylaws and also town council, Attorney Huxton was at every meeting and he's an expert. Zoning Board of Appeals member. And then also, as Mr. Bruno mentioned, these are all public meetings, publicly posted and we encouraged attendance, we had attendance. You know, we can't control who attends, the meetings are not.
Right. So there are a lot of things in here that are crossed off. I could keep going on and on about how the planning board's crossed off for the appointed board and that the.
Well, what in particular, I just want to make sure we're understanding your concerns.
I've been going over all of it.
No, the, you mentioned the site plan review, I believe that's the section we were talking about.
You break it down so much that there's different levels and I think that you should just make it simple and make sure that the planning board sees all site plan applications and they make the recommendation on whether or not.
Site plan review is under the direction of the planning board.
You're breaking it down so that a thousand square foot building could go onto a site plan without any approval by the elected planning board. That's what you're doing.
If it doesn't trigger any of the other points, so any sort of business.
But that's not how it is now.
Any other, any sort of business is going to require three or more parking spots, right? The planning board knows that. So that would then trigger three of a minor project, which is three to five parking spots. If it required more than that, again, we're not doing away with any of your other requirements. If it required more than that, that then elevates it to a major project, right, under this threshold. So again, or any changes to loading areas, dumpster locations, exterior lighting, major landscaping features, accessory structures, that's another trigger of the site plan review process. So it's not taking away any sort of oversight of the site plan review process. The goal of this was, again, to make it so it's a clear, defined process for the applicant and the planning board. If you have specific recommendations, that certainly would make sense. As a planning board member, we want to hear that.
Oh, really?
Absolutely, that's why we're here.
Would have been nice to have been able to take my zoning board of, my zoning review. I was on the zoning bylaw review with an open seat. I still have my card, it's still stamped by the town clerk, and I would have been at every meeting and I would have had it, but I was against what the town was against, MBTA zoning. And it just happened to be when the senior overlay district was in front of us, the day that I was removed, when you had Thorne Dyke over here with three members of the planning board sitting here and selling out the town. The only reason that I was removed from that board, which I believe illegal, was due to the fact that they wanted to change the bylaws to include mixed use, blighted properties and all the things that the town of Halifax clearly has stated before were against.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
These were open meetings, correct?
Absolutely, all posted.
So anybody could attend if they wanted to attend?
Absolutely.
End of story.
And just another point for the public, these are recommendations, right? So the zoning bylaw review committee is a subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen put these forward as recommendations. It's a legal requirement that the planning board hold this public hearing, hence why we're here tonight. And then ultimately, it is town meeting's decision on whether to adopt these or not by a two-thirds majority. You know, that's, so it's not anyone's decision other than the residents of Halifax. We're trying to just, A, follow the law and also try to provide clarification and get feedback on these.
Right.
And as long as it's been discussed at this hearing, it can be amended on the town meeting floor.
Absolutely.
And I do not believe that, I have a question about the accessory unit dwellings. Why is it that we would take accessory unit dwellings as a zoning bylaw change pressed down upon us in a mandate when MBTA was a mandate and we didn't want to take that? So why wouldn't we, so that the town can vote not to take AUD?
They can, we would still be issuing the permits anyways, it's a requirement of the building department that we have to issue these.
How?
Because it's the state law.
Well, the town doesn't accept the bylaw, then how does the state overrun us? I mean, that again, is tyranny. It's called tyranny.
Yeah, I'm not here to debate that with you, I'm here to explain the zoning changes. The state law requires accessory dwelling units and as our building commissioner, he is also upheld to the oath to enforce the laws. So if somebody comes before him, he has to, he has to follow the law.
Right, what about the town of Halifax home rule? I mean, we really just need to talk about that.
I think you're a little bit off topic.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, Rich, go ahead.
So the accessory dwelling unit state law is not a local acceptance law. It's not, I mean, some laws say if accepted by the town through vote of its, I mean, this is not one of those. It's a law that's been passed, you know, by the state legislature and the town would be subject to it anyway. This kind of just gives a little bit more control, actually, to it. And most towns are passing these kinds of zoning bylaws, but the real point is that it's a state law that would apply anyway.
Well, I'm just talking about the fact that it's a lot like the MBTA mandate, that they were trying to push down upon all the towns. It's the same type of thing, so I don't see why the state can just go in and say what we can and cannot do in our properties because it does affect all of us and it can affect our infrastructure.
I mean, in the most general sense, it's similar to the MBTA Communities Act because they're both state laws, but I think that's really kind of where the similarity ends.
No, I understand they're different laws, but I don't like the fact that we were sitting here as a United States constitutional republic and we're taking the state now allowing them to say you can change the, that you need to change this. It's the opposite of what our country was founded on.
Mr. Huxton?
Yes, Tom.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think one of the differences is the MBTA mandate requires the town to pass a bylaw, whereas the accessory dwelling unit was not presented in that fashion, it is in fact state law.
That's a very good point, that is true.
Right, it doesn't make any better.
And, I mean, a lot of people consider the accessory dwelling unit law to be a good thing because, you know, it, for people who want to like make a little more income, you know, single-family residents, owners, they can do that. You know, it can provide another form of housing for people who might be able to afford other forms of housing. So, you know, people see positives to it also.
Keeps your children home. I don't know if that's positive or not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Cody, is there anything in, especially on the site plan review, that still, you know, can there be, whatever level it is, level one, two, or three, can there be waivers and modifications to certain things there or is there anything that addresses that? Because we've had that, we've had that problem in town also.
Let's see, let me get to the exact section here, so I'm quoting it.
You know, that specifically says it's mandated, so to speak, not use that word, but that a site plan is done, that a peer review is done, that stormwater management survey is being done. That can't be waived, bypassed, or modified, or can it be, under certain circumstances?
Well, the threshold for conducting the actual site plan is in here. That, you know, the site plan would have to be conducted, but then under the conditions for approval, it does say that the site plan approval may be made subject to conditions, modifications, and restrictions as the planning board may deem necessary in order to satisfy any of the decision criteria listed above. Any construction, reconstruction, alteration, or addition shall be carried on only in conformity with such conditions, modifications, or restrictions in conformity with the application in site plan.
Because, again, we have run into that problem in the past, kind of learned the hard way, so to speak, when water is rushing down our home street, you know, you can go surfing on it. And a site plan, a peer review, stormwater management was given a pass, you know, or was varied, or was deemed not necessary. That's what I'm looking for, is if there was something, you know, that concrete that would, whether it be the zoning board, planning board, or any board.
So it does, with site plan review, it goes on under the procedure, it basically gives you a decision criteria, right, so it lays it out very specifically. And then it says, you know, that the project will minimize the volume of cut and fill, minimize the number of removed trees, six inches in caliber or larger, the area of wetland vegetation displays soil erosion, the threat of air and water pollution, traffic congestion, avoid removal of existing stone walls where removal is required, minimize length of removal. So it, yeah, provide adequate stormwater management and other utility consistence, utilities consistent with the requirements of the town of Halifax Stormwater Management bylaw and the Planning Board subdivision, rules, and regulations. So it's clear in what kind of the criteria are and then the avenue to get there, again, through site plan review is the planning board.
But that same criteria was there prior, as it exists right now, but waivers and whatnot could, were able to be given, I guess depending on who you spoke to or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, so that's, that would be a discretion of the planning board.
Okay, great, thank you. Anybody else have any more questions, concerns, or comments?
Mike, just a call, Tom said about the ADU. So if we don't have a bylaw, if we don't, if we don't accept this bylaw, we don't have any bylaw that even mentions the ADU, and you, or you, or you, or I walk into the building inspector's office and tell him I'm going to put an ADU in my yard, he has to allow it. He has to allow it. It's not, we get a choice, he has to allow it. If we put this bylaw into effect, the point here is it gives us some control. As Attorney Huxton said, we can control it to some extent and this gives us some control over it. But if we don't have it, you know, he's going to get to do it anyway. Building inspector has to let him do it, under, you know, whatever he wants to do, so.
No, I was just going to agree with him. Yeah, that's exactly what it is.
That's why, I mean, it is a state law, it's a requirement, and I get all the MBTA stuff, but this is completely different, it's just a whole different kettle of fish.
Well, okay, the way I look at it, and anybody else has a different opinion, please jump in. Basically, we have two options. I did, I asked if, anybody from the pub, I didn't say it here before, sorry, yes, step up and give us your name and address, please.
Chris Grelian. Because you didn't know me, most of you do. When this whole process was going on, right, right now you have cat, mice, and you guys could be judges or almacres because you're really not jumping and singing claws in like she is. Why, when you're reading over this stuff and you're going to fine tune everything, you're sitting with a gaggle of people and you're going, all right, we'll read through this, all right, we've got to change this to this, we have to change that to that, we're going to adjust it so it makes it easier. And then you bring it up in front of these guys and it takes X amount of time and stuff going back and forth, all this, and someone gets a hair here and someone gets a hair there, why don't you just go, all right, this is being changed on this particular 167-20, we changed this because of this reason. And when you send them to that 14-day period that they're supposed to be able And when you send them to that 14-day period that they're supposed to be able to absorb all of this new information, and there's 95 pages of the stuff, you could be reading through it, which I seriously doubt you all did, from what I'm seeing. When you're reading it, and the words changed, you can look over to the side and go, "This was changed because of this reason." So now, if they have any questions, in the few days that it's before this particular day, they can call each other and go, "Hey, this, that, and the other thing," instead of sitting in front of a camera and blocking things back and forth, throwing shots across the bow, trying to get a point across, or trying to explain something, and not getting it, or getting it, or then having 17 other questions. They could actually just sit there and go, "All right, that's why he's doing this." So that question will never come up. So it'll be a little bit more smoother of a process, instead of her reading 95 pages and not getting any other color commentary. They could just say, "All right, this was changed because of this reason."
They did that, but they didn't do all the things that I have been bringing up. It was just an overview. It was a little bit of a, what I call, a sales pitch, an overview.
Yeah, but there are any words changed in the entire situation.
They just kind of surmised it.
This person should be going through the chairman, but you just...
They surmised it?
Is there anything else?
I can only have one person who's going. Yes. Carry on. They can only go through what?
Well, I appreciate your comments. Like, you know, in a perfect world, that's how certainly it should work, and go back and forth in an adult-like manner to work things out, and which is what I think the basic premise for the whole thing was. They've been working on...
So the reasoning why the changes were made in the paperwork, but it just... we didn't know that. So you guys already had that information?
We were just left the final draft of the zoning bylaws on our chairs tonight.
Yes, John.
I don't know. I don't sure I understood what his question was, anyway, but first the first thing is, first thing is, we are planning to have another public discussion on April 30th. That'll be here. Anybody who's had now two, three weeks to read these bylaws can come, and we'll talk about it again. That's still part of the process. It's not like we're trying to move this through. This has been in works before...
I didn't think that at all. I was trying to move through this.
No, I understand. And that's why you have a public hearing, so we take these things. But we are going to have another hear... not another hearing, but we'll have a public discussion on this before town meeting, so that, again, we can have these discussions. You know, if you look at the zoning bylaw to start with, it's a very complicated piece of literature, you know, and it's been in... it's been amended over the course of time. If you look at... you'll see in their annotations to, you know, town meeting in 1990, town meeting in 2012. I mean, all these different things, it's been changed, but it's not been put together as a whole, and that's what we're trying to do. There are certain pieces that are going to be different. Most of it is... was a matter of reorg... if you read it, most of it's a matter of reorganizing it. Some of the definitions, for example, had to be changed, like medical marijuana, which we don't need anymore, some other things like that. So that's what this is all about. And again, this is not... this is not meant to slam anybody. It's not meant to drum it down your throat. It's not at all. But the purpose of this is, again, this is something that's been in the works for 12 years. And what we're trying to do is to do something for the town that's positive. That's really what we're trying to do. And that's what all this is about. And if there are objections to it...
Oh, I wasn't questioning that at all. I was just trying to...
Yeah, but if there are objections... but if there are objections to it that we can work out between now and when it's voted on, that's what we'll try to do. I mean, that's really what we should be doing. That's what we're trying to do. And that's the whole purpose here. It's not meant to be aggressive at all. It's not, really not. And it's merely meant to do the town's business. That's what we're trying to do.
Can I ask you another question? On the... what is it called? Blighted?
Blighted... blighted properties.
Properties and stuff. Who sets the fees, and who gets the money?
The fees are set in this bylaw, and then the...
I wasn't... my question is, so if who gets... who sets the fees, who gets the money? And is this person going to be fined if they're not the money paid the first time? Is the money going to go back to the community to try to find something to fix the damn problem for that particular person?
Let me see if I can get an answer for you. Mr. Cody, or Mr. Cody?
The fine amounts are set in the bylaw. They're defined in the bylaw. And as far as where the money goes, Mass. General Law requires that the finances just go back into the Town's General Fund.
Are there state fines that are established already, too? Or how would these fines determine, I guess, come up, the numbers?
Just from information that we've gathered from other communities. But they're laid out in the bylaw. So again, that's somewhere, if there's a concern there, that can be changed, that can be amended, the amount of the fines.
Which towns did we get the blighted properties from?
Rich, do you recall which towns we got the blighted property bylaw from? We really pulled... we can get that information, but we pulled several communities together and kind of made it fit with Halifax. And we also wanted to make sure we weren't overreaching, right, and making sure that we're compliant with state law. Because, like I think was mentioned earlier, you know, all these have to go through the attorney general to make sure we're compliant with state law, and so...
Do you remember any of the towns that were looked at?
Not off the top of my head, no. Not for this section.
Whitman, Hanson?
About the Fight Department, the Board of Health, the different departments and whatnot. There were no numbers or anything set by, say, for the Board of Health or anything like that, for a specific violation of the health code, you know, because we were talking...
Those are separate. Those are separate. Still. Yeah, this is just for violations of the blighted properties bylaw. The fines are laid out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Just for any clarification, whatever it's worth, the communities have always had some ability to take care of these properties. I've gone out over the years and gotten court orders to demolish homes. So this kind of codifies something, as opposed to... it may be a little longer than I might have preferred, but maybe a little harsher here and there. But, you know, it isn't anything extraordinary, really.
But that's acting as a building commissioner, building inspector?
Yeah, a zoning officer, which is even worse.
Anybody else have any other comments, statements they'd like to make?
Cody, can I have that listed towns, please, for the blighted?
Yes, your name and address, please.
Jeff Madden, 134 Fuller Street. These bylaws do nothing to help me. I've been to the town several times. My next-door neighbor brought in unbelievable amount of trash, put it on the property line. So if I could just show you guys some pictures at the end of this, so you could see what I'm talking about, because I don't know... some people say it's one man's treasure, one man's trash. But if you could see what I'm dealing with, you might have a little more understanding.
We're not talking specific cases tonight, sir. This is just in general.
Oh, no. I'm speaking in general.
Certainly, each individual circumstance is separate on its own and has to be judged on its own.
Right, but these bylaws do nothing to help me at all. So, I mean, I work for the Town of Hangum. I've been to their town hall. I've been to every department you guys have here. So I'm just saying, some new bylaws could help a lot of people. But if anybody's interested in looking at a couple of pictures, I'd appreciate it.
I will. I...
Yes, after the meeting, you said.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah. And my intention isn't that, like, somebody has a couple of things. I understand the whole... but we already have ways to deal with that, if people would actually, you know, enforce it. But making a bylaw like this puts... it's not about what it is today. It's what it will become. That is the problem for me in this. I understand when there's, like, a hoarder house, you know, and the entire property is covered by something, that that's a problem. But I think we already have things in place for that. What I'm talking about is the fact that this can start being interpreted a little bit differently, and for people's interests, if you will. I've seen it used incorrectly, and I... but I definitely know what you're talking about, I think, based on what you're stating. But I'm looking out for the little guy that will be in trouble in a few years, because there are some cities that already have this type of bylaw that have issues where people are losing their houses due to the fact that they've been bullied by certain people in the town. And this is a mechanism to do so.
Okay. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to first, if there's no other comments or whatnot, I'd like to close the public hearing, and then we, as a board, will decide if and how and when we want to vote. So I'll accept a motion to adjourn the public hearing on the...
I would actually like to do something different. I would like to extend this hearing to our next planning board meeting, where we can go to the forum and listen to what the townspeople are stating at that forum, and then make a better educated decision after everybody's read the bylaws, because I believe, Tom, you said earlier that you didn't get a chance to read them all. I don't know if you have. You could go over the site plan things. I didn't think you did. The site plan, you could go over that, different stuff, and mark down different things that maybe you think could be added or subtracted to it. And, you know, whatever you would want to do, Rick, like, you know, like, maybe make sure that a peer review happens on every single site plan. And we could think about all these things, take notes, go to the public forum, and then at our next planning board meeting, we can vote after having a fully educated and a full board, because we are missing one member tonight.
I was going to suggest that we just wait for our recommendation at town meeting, which is effectively the same thing.
Right. We do have another meeting as a planning board before town meeting, on which we could, again, gather information or whatnot that we want, and then vote as a board whether or not we're going to recommend it at town meeting. And that way, there are changes, you know, we want to add, subtract, or whatever, it gives us, as a planning board, an opportunity to do so. I thought we... but as a public hearing, if it was open, we had to close the public hearing.
So we would request that you at least close the public hearing tonight. Your decision can come anytime prior to town meeting. The reason is, if you do not close your public hearing, continue it, we would not meet the 21-day threshold set by the state. So it potentially could result in no action being able to be taken at town meeting if we don't meet that 21-day threshold. So you don't need to make the decision, but you do need to have held that hearing within more than 21 days, which this needs to...
Do you know what date that 21 days is up, Cody? And when did it start ticking, and when is it up?
It's 21 days from May 12th, I believe. It's the mid... mid-next week would be the 21 day, roughly. I don't... I have my calendar in front of me, but three weeks, Monday. Monday would be three weeks from town meeting. So the public hearing would need to be closed prior to that. Your decision, like I said, could come anytime, but the public hearing itself...
We can do it at town meeting.
Your decision, absolutely. Yeah. As a matter of fact, the warrant says, "Planning Board's Recommendation at Town Meeting." So whether you make that decision beforehand and just stand up and give that recommendation, or you actually make that at town meeting, that's fine.
We have to post a meeting anyway if we're going to be there, so we just post it a little earlier, so that we have a chance to...
Well, we can take it up at our next meeting and still have it on our agenda. I'm going to make a vote that we... does anybody else have anything at all?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I'm making a motion now, that we close the public hearing for the bylaws, and that we move the rest of our conversations, and maybe any notations and changes that we might want to the next meeting in the beginning of May. May...
I think that should be two different motions.
May 1st. May Day.
I agree. I think it should be two different motions. Correct me if I'm wrong. The motion to close the hearing, and then I'll accept the motion.
That's fine. So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor to close the public hearing. I'll ask for a voice vote. Amy?
Yep.
Myself, yes. Tom?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Passes unanimous. Thank you, people, for your participation. Thanks, guys, very much. Appreciate all the work you've done.
This is a reminder, you have the other item, the petition zoning article, that you have to have a public hearing on as well.
Right.
Just want to do that now.
You want me to open that? Well, so, just to clean up business, on the zoning bylaws as a whole, I would like to bring it up and have it on the agenda at the next meeting. So I will motion to make sure that our zoning bylaws will be on the agenda for the next meeting. May 1st, 7:00 p.m.
I have a motion on the floor to put it on the agenda for our next meeting. Do I have a second?
Sure.
I have a motion and a second. I'll ask for roll call vote. Amy?
Yep.
Myself, yes. Tom?
Yep.
And Rick?
Sure.
Unanimous. All right. Let's go on to open up the review of citizens' petition article to allow body art establishments, tattoo studios... there's another studio we were trying to think of.
We'll see what I mean.
As a permitted... as a permitted use by right in a commercial zone.
Is there a hearing?
We could do it in residence by what they just wrote on the board.
I don't see a hearing notice for this one. Did we close the hearing too soon without going over the tattoo one? Was that... no?
This is a separate one. This is a separate one.
Do we have...
There's A and B, and this is B.
Okay.
We just opened and closed and had A. Now we're doing B.
Right. So I'm looking for the advertisement that we had, so I can read that and to rack it, is what I'm asking about. Do you know what I mean?
I don't think I saw it in my...
Do you see what I'm saying now? So what do I do? Do I sort of... All right. So, Tom, thinking that I could say the Halifax Planning Board will hold a hearing, and say our meeting date, and then to review the zoning bylaw amendment to allow body art establishment tattoo studios as a permitted use by right in the commercial zones...
I think that covers it.
Well, so you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So motion to open hearing.
I don't see the hearing notice. Maybe we can find it online?
Good idea. Town website, probably?
Yeah, I would think it would be there. I would hope it would be there.
Give me a second. I think I might have found it.
Well, it says on our...
No, I agree with you wholeheartedly, but I'm looking for this to legally read out loud.
Yeah. And I think in that too...
No, that's not it.
It says, "The texts comprising the proposed zoning bylaw amendments," as in plural, "may be inspected at the office of the town will hold a public meeting. I create order to review zoning bylaw amendments for town meeting."
But...
So do you think that covers this? Where is plural? What do you guys think?
I don't... I would... I see what you're stating, however...
I'd be more comfortable having a notice.
Having a separate one.
Well, because we knew... I think that they were prob... all right. So, for instance, the date that this one was put in was March 11th. The... I'm sorry, the... I'll be specific. The body art tattoo one was put in March 11th, so when it was advertised. Was it advertised the same? But they're listed separately, because it's not in the main body of the zoning bylaws? And then we'd have to reopen the hearing, which I think we'll have to get Huxham and Cody in here for. Cody, can you hear me? Does that make sense?
Read the undersigned.
But we have to read the... wait a minute.
Did you look on the site, maybe?
I did look on the site, but you know what? What about the Halifax Reporter, or Express, whatever it is?
The only thing I see here is...
I think it was a pair of ones. I think it was Halifax Express.
Yeah, yeah.
You think what?
We had it would have been advertised, so the Express was...
I'm going to see if I can catch him. I want to take a five-minute recess.
A second.
Accept a motion for a five-minute recess.
So moved.
Have a second?
Almost a favor, sir.
Aye.
I'll be right back.
I'll make a motion to go back into the planning board session, open session meeting.
Of Thursday, April...
I'll make a motion to go back into the planning board session, open session meeting.
Of Thursday, April 17, 2025.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, now we're going to accept a motion to open the hearing for the public hearing to, for section D, review of a citizens' petition article to allow body art establishments, tattoo studios as a permitted use by right in commercial zones. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, where are we?
So we have.
The presenter here?
Is the presenter here?
No.
Good one.
So we have a bylaw that I think simply reads, hold on.
167.7, commercial uses allowed by special permit only in an industrial district. That's what the current one is. And it wants to be changed to by right. Well, here is the.
Yeah, it's, right now, it's only in the industrial zone and they want to move it, keep it in the industrial, but also, right, and then go to commercial, but make it all as of right. Is that how, and so it wouldn't be a special permit, it would be as of right?
Because they're not here, would you mind reading their letter into the.
Yeah, I have zero problem with that. I was just actually going to the actual bylaw itself because I can see how it's there and I just wanted to make sure.
167.7, under commercial uses, I think it's I, I just read it out by.
Yes, because you could read it, which is currently.
Yeah, 167.7, commercial uses allowed by special permit only in the industrial district. Everything else is not allowed. And.
Can I? Yeah. Instead of me looking for it, do you mind? Thank you. Hold on this.
Do we give it?
No, Tom. Have to open the hearing. You mean this one, right? But for some, oh, wait a minute. I have it. It was on the back of a page. Okay. Okay. It's on the screen, too. John, I don't know if you want to look at the screen and I'll read it out loud. Proposed amendment to the Halifax zoning bylaws, which would be adding a section in 167.7C table of use regulations. I imagine it would go in by alphabetical order to allow body art establishments parentheses, tattoo studios, and parentheses, as a permitted use by right in commercial zones. Vote to amend Article 167-7, which is our schedule of use regulations of the Halifax zoning bylaws as follows, or take any other action relative thereto. Amendment, amend section 167.7C table of use regulations by modifying the designated of body art establishment to allow operation in the B, commercial and business district zoning, in addition to the existing I, industrial zone. Currently, it is not permitted in commercial, I'm sorry, current is not permitted or special permit required in just the industrial zone, correct? Proposed Y would be permitted, excuse me, permitted by right. So they'd be modifying 167.7D special use regulations to remove any requirement for a special permit for body art establishments in B, commercial and business district. The purpose and justification, the current zoning restriction, which limits tattoos, studios to industrial zones or requires a special permit, is outdated and based on misconceptions from the early 2000s. Modern tattoo studios are highly regulated professional establishments that prioritize cleanliness and safety, offering a welcoming environment for both patrons and the community. Since that time, the town has allowed businesses such as a marijuana dispensary to join the B, commercial and business district zone alongside liquor stores, bars, and hair salons. This demonstrating Halifax willingness to modernize its business regulations. Tattoo studios today are professional, highly regulated, and operate similarly to barbershop salons and art studios, all of which are permitted in commercial zones. Reclassifying tattoo studios as a by right use in commercial zones will encourage business growth, increase local tax revenue, and enhance the town's business diversity while maintaining all necessary health and regulate, and safety regulations. I'd like to state that I was reading this and I'm not necessarily in belief of all of that.
Not necessarily endorsing.
How about feedback, some opinions from the board? Tom?
I've struggled with this a little bit. I get the point that some of this is outdated. I mean, not that I'm going to be running down to get a tattoo anytime soon, but, you know, they're legitimate businesses now. Part of my problem is that we really don't have a lot of industrial locations to actually cite one. I can't even think of too many places that are still available in the industrial zone. So, you know, we're kind of a little exclusionary to begin with. I guess I don't have a real problem with it. I'd probably still like to have it by special permit, but I understand the argument. So I guess I'd be generally okay with it.
Rick? Amy?
Yeah, I don't see a problem with it at all. Honestly. You know, with special permit, just like it would be in industrial right now.
What do you think?
I actually 100% agree with Tom. Like, I was going to say we could make it by special permit. And so keep it industrial special permit, but also do special permit in commercial business instead of changing industrial to by right and commercial business to by right. Not because I think it would be bad, but just because it is a serious business. And I know that the company that has put this forth is very good with their border health regulations and their reputation is wonderful, but that doesn't mean that every single one of them will be. And I think that that would be the only reason to make sure it's special permit. I also would say that another tattooing thing that could come in to town from this, which would be interesting, is like a microblading. Have you guys heard of that? All right. Well, if you look at like your TV a lot, you'll see that the actors are starting to have like tattooed eyebrows and stuff like that. That would be something maybe that could come into like Tikas or, you know, someplace like that. Maybe they could generate more income from something like that. It would, you know what I mean? So I don't have a problem with this bylaw at all. I actually think that the board of health, and you can tell me if I'm incorrect on this or something, but I think the board of health would probably have a lot to do with it anyways. So really, getting a special permit from the planning board might be a little bit overstepping on this. Like, I would say that the board of health would probably be doing regular inspections and things of that. So, like I said, I went to agree with you, but.
Yeah, I mean, I just threw, I just threw that out there. I think a special permit's probably overregulating it. We either allow it, we don't allow it.
Right.
So I, I'd probably vote for it at town meeting. And all we're doing is really going to vote on whether we recommend it as it's written or we can try to amend it on the floor.
Right.
But I mean, I can, I can certainly be comfortable enough saying, you know, I support it even without any kind of special permit provision.
I think too, my own opinion, you know, back in the day, you know, all of there was, you heard all the horror stories about, yeah, hepatitis and everything else coming from the needle and whatnot. But I understand updated version of all of that, that really cracked down on that kind of stuff. And I'm sure it's got to be crazy regulated, you know, by the board of health or whatever. But I do, I do see your point. It's, I mean, you go through any town or whatever and they're all over the place. It's not like, I like to say it's an accepted business.
Yeah, well, you can because it is.
Yeah. Yep. Now, whether or not, I don't know specifically if they've referred to it, but I know a lot of the other places, the tattoo places, they include piercings and all that other stuff. I don't know if that's, if it's like state regulated, that all comes under, under, under one, you know, universal license. They have to be licensed.
Good question.
But if you think about it, as far as a business goes, it's just another business. It's the regulation end of it, and all of that would be regulated, and I have to believe it's the board of health. So.
Really would have much to do with it.
Yeah, exactly.
Other than, you know, well, I'm sure there's restrictions on getting rid of the equipment and the needles and.
Well, like a dentist's office.
Like a dentist's office. So the health, health company that's going into.
They have to clean, they have to use certain disinfectants.
Yeah.
So would we even talk about maybe making sure over the next couple of weeks that body art establishment might be able to allow them to do the piercing part without having come back?
I don't, I don't think, I mean, the bylaw's written the way it is.
Right. Do you think that's too big of a change to add that?
You could do that on a town meeting floor.
Right.
But I would talk to the proponent first to see what their attitude was about it. But, you know, I mean, I think it's separate from what we're doing here. We're just looking at this article. Do we support it? Do we not support it?
Yeah.
As it's written.
Yeah, and I like it as it, like, I actually do. Like, that only thought that I was thinking is exactly what you said.
And that was just a knee-jerk reaction from me, and then I thought about it some more.
Yeah. Well, yeah. But, but then maybe we should find out whether or not that does allow that because it, or if they even need a special thing to do piercings because that would be a really great thing for them to have as part of it.
But we can only vote on what's in front of us.
Yeah.
But we could bring it to their attention, but we still have to get this done for the 21 days.
Right. Right. No, I understand that. I wasn't meaning leaving the hearing open, but I was meaning, could we find out whether or not that would happen so that we know just out of curiosity, you know? Anyway, that was that. Okay. So does anybody want to take an action on this one?
Well, hold on one second. Anybody, no other comments or anything I want to open up to?
Oh, yeah. Right, right, right.
Yes, sir, if you could come up and. Could you come up to the mic, please, so we can? Thank you. It's me again. Chris Greeley. If this thing's only in industrial right now, and they're trying to get it into commercial zoning? Now, you guys are going through this metamorphosis with dual zoning down into residential also? Well, aren't you going commercially and residential dual purposes? Didn't that get brought up?
Only for housing.
For what?
Only for housing. You can build a single-family residence on a commercial law, but you can't put a business on a residential law. But this.
Well, they, well, they try to get that into a customary home business with the change of times now.
It will only be in the commercial business district to answer that. Like, so there's a chart. I can show it to you if you would like.
I could see some other.
I also know from past experience as far as customary home occupations go, that state laws specify specific businesses that qualify as a customary home occupation, lawyers, accountants, they can have a business, a customary home out of their, out of their homes, seamstress, there's a bunch of different ones.
Classic.
Hairdressers, like care salons.
Just automatically say, yes, it's a customary home occupation. That can't happen.
But you did say studio, and that's a studio. That's, I think, more of us's question.
Every, I mean, if you're, it's like intermingling what you were talking about.
But that's really exclusive of what we're dealing with.
Exactly. Would you call it a?
We're making a zoning change here. That cannot, cannot happen independent of what this is.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So you're saying because, which isn't added yet, but it was taken away from the home occupation and studio. Now, if we brought that back into that, then you're. They would have, have to do another bylaw change to make it so that we would vote to see whether or not it was in the residence, allowed in the residence area, of course, unless the state changes it and demands that we do it.
That's a town meeting.
Yeah. So, thank you. Anybody else? All right. As a board, what do you, what do you think? You, you want to, you want to leave it and vote on it just the way it is? Or do you want?
We can only vote on it the way.
That's right.
We can amend it on town meeting floor, but.
So there is, just as an FYI, a letter of support for the zoning bylaw amendment from Kim Sturge that was sent in and is right here. I don't know if we should read it into record where it was given to us?
It's a public hearing, Mike. Yes, please, if you wouldn't mind.
I am reading a letter into record that was received on March 11th at the town clerk's office, letter of support for zoning bylaw amendment to the Halifax Select Board and Town Clerk from Kim Sturge, March 10th, 2025. I guess we received it March 11th. Dear Halifax Select Board and Town Clerk, I am writing as a longtime resident of Halifax to request that the town consider updating its zoning bylaws to allow tattoo studios in commercial zones rather than limiting them to the industrial zones. Tattooing has truly transformed over the past few decades. As a client and tattoo collector, I personally witnessed the shift in the public's perception of the art form over the years. The old stereotype of tattoo shops being linked to a biker or tough guy image is now a thing of the past. As tattooing has gained popularity, a fresh wave of artists and clients have elevated industry standards and turning tattooing into a respected form of art and expression. Today, studios are professional and inviting spaces where clients can receive custom, high-quality artwork. My husband and I have been getting tattooed by Henry for 10 years, and I've seen the love and care that he and his wife have put into Broad Street Tattoo. They have been active community members, sponsoring local events and charities, hosting art shows, and organizing fundraises for environmental and social causes. After 24 years, their 18th century building in downtown Bridgewater is being sold and may undergo a lengthy renovation, forcing them to find a new home for their beloved shop. It doesn't make sense that the tattoo studios are still treated worse than other businesses like hair or nail salons, liquor stores, or even the marijuana dispensary we now have in town. Given the changes since 2001, it seems only reasonable to update Halifax zoning regulations to reflect the modern reality of the industry.
Okay.
Just for the record, the applicant, the person, the shop, the owner, really is irrelevant to this.
Totally.
To this whole conversation.
Totally.
It's all right. Well, I was trying to hurt you a bit.
Okay, so what is the pleasure of the board? You should, again, we have the option. We should close the public hearing and then we can open up the hearing and vote if you want to vote on this tonight. Or do you want to wait till?
I don't have a problem voting tonight.
You have a problem?
It's up to you, the last.
Okay. So you want to close the hearing first?
Yes.
Everybody's all set, right? Okay. I, motion, thank you. Motion to close the public hearing for the tattoo and general bylaws.
Is a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
So motion and a second to close the public hearing on the bylaw review of body art establishments of tattoos as permitted use of right in the commercial zone. I'll ask for a voice vote. Amy?
We're just closing the hearing, correct?
Yes, we're closing here.
Closing the hearing, yes.
Yes. I vote yes. Tom?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes unanimous. Okay, now what is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion that the board support the article as presented at town meeting.
We might want to be specific. You mean the tattoo one, right?
The tattoo part, yes. Which is, did they assign an article number to it?
I believe they did.
Petition for the article. Petition for the article.
No, no, they did not. It's just under B review.
It's probably on the warrant. We just don't have it.
Yeah, because the warrant's already.
Should, all right, so.
Planning board, yeah, support the petition for the amendment to the body art bylaw or tattoo.
As a permitted use by right.
As a permitted use by right in the commercial zone. And to change the designation for industrial requiring a special permit to as of right.
I'll second that.
I think I got it wrong.
I think so.
Does, uh, let me ask you this. Uh, do you feel we should put anything in there about it being in stipulation as far as, uh,
We can't change the article.
You're right.
But what were you going to say?
You know, that it complies, you know, with any state requirement for medical inspections?
Oh, they'll have to.
Or is that just automatic? If they did that, yeah. Okay, so I, uh, I do have a, uh, a motion and a, and a second on the floor. I'm going to ask for a voice vote. Rick?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes, for the tattoo, yeah.
Yes, for the tattoo. And, uh, I'm going to vote no. But it passes. The board recommends it. Uh, for town meeting, we recommend it.
I'm going to venture to guess that Brendan would have voted yes.
Good point.
Well, we can point at you at town meeting, or he voting no.
It happens to the best.
Okay, let's move right on to appointments now. Uh, we'll continue with PS PR dash 25 dash 2, 350A Industrial Drive Site Plan Review. Mr. Newcomb, you want to, uh,
Aren't you glad you came early?
Yeah, I was super early.
Um, Rick, I think you have the new plan sitting next to you. See though, thanks. Or, I think they are. Their new plan, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It has all the stuff you asked for at the last meeting.
That's what, that was my next question, Nick. I'd, I'd like to go through the, uh, the list from, uh, PGV Engineering.
Do you have one of these, Amy?
Yeah, I need a, a, thanks. Thank you.
He listed up, uh, under, under comments. If, uh,
Anybody want to look around? We have a couple extras if anybody wants to. Might as well, right? Want to give that? And there's an extra, oh, it's Brendan's.
Do you, do you have a copy of that?
I got a big one.
No, 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 a, a copy of Pat Brennan's from the care review.
Yeah, you guys gave me when I first got here, yep.
Okay.
I received this today.
Okay.
I made a copy of it when we first started tonight.
All right, well, starting at the bottom, at the very bottom of the page, that's the first one. The zoning bylaw as of 167 dash 28 G3 requires submission plan, submission of a plan showing characteristics of all land within 300 feet of the parcel. The, uh, locust map does not include the details required by the bylaw. I got a small one right here.
This is the same one she put in her packet, too.
Um, yes.
Yeah, so, so we have copies.
So some of them are missing, yes.
He's going to need it when he puts the foundation in.
Some of them are on, some of them are missing.
What do you mean, some of?
The names.
Some of what? Oh, oh, like down here? Oh, okay.
But the ones on the top are, and then across the street, right? Is that what?
Within 300 feet of the property.
Right.
So that would be a locust map, right? Which is at the top, right?
No.
300.
The actual names of your neighbors, so on, if you're looking at this map on the south side of it, if you will, there's names of the people that are about you, but on the top one, oh, wait a minute.
Yeah, on the top right of the map.
The top, the top one is.
It's right there.
Yep.
And then across the street.
There's none.
Well, it's within 300 feet. That's way more than 300 feet on that map. So I don't know if your engineer missed that, but it's right there.
Across the street would be,
Across the street.
Close, 300, it's lot line to lot line, so listen, it's, it's just about the bylaw, not, not trying to be picky, it's just adding, all right, okay.
I'm just, I'm just stating what I see, that's all.
Yeah, no, no, I understand.
Especially when he turns around and he quotes the, uh, the zoning bylaw, you know. It's fine.
Okay, you're going to, number two on the second page, plans of the proposed building should be submitted. So do we have actual plans of the building?
I gave you that last meeting.
The interiors?
It requires renderings and plans of all buildings and structures.
Yeah, the outside, the outside.
They gave me, like, um, do you have the stuff I gave you last time or no?
Unfortunately, we don't have that file here.
Okay, well, it's in there.
Okay.
I haven't, I haven't, um, bought the building yet because I don't have a building permit yet. They'll give me the plans for the building when I have a building permit. I want to, want to buy the building when I don't have a building permit.
Oh, you mean the plans to buy the building?
So, yes, so those are the ones off of their, um, website of what the building would look like, the structure of the plans.
Yeah.
Those are the plans I gave you last time.
Okay, so we'll have to dig up that file for the next meeting. Okay. That makes sense.
Number three. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it's going to go to Pat, I would think.
Danielle, can we send, um, the building plans? I know, but she'll hear us when she's listening to the meeting. Um, that's my idea of a note. Um, can you please send the, um, architectural plans or the drawings of the plans to Pat Brennan for review, please? Thank you.
Uh, number three, you've never seen these before? I don't want to be redundant, but the zoning bylaw 167 28 G4 2 requires that proposed topography be shown on the plan. Uh, the plan only shows existing topography except for the proposed drainage basin. So, um, Mr. Brennan needs all that. Number four, uh, G4, section seven requires that the access and facilities of all structures and uses be shown, including trash disposal facilities. This is what he's looking for. G4 8 requires that the proposed water supply for the proposed buildings be shown. Uh, G4 9, uh, and, uh, H3 require drainage calculations to demonstrate zero increase in runoff for a 25-year storm under proposed conditions. That's huge. Uh, number seven, uh, G4 dash 11.
So this does have, you're going way too fast for me. I'm still on the first one.
That's what I'm saying. This is, if, if, obviously you haven't even had a chance to do all this, and it has to be included. I'm, I'm right, I'm reading it so it goes into the record so that, uh, Mr. Brennan knows that it's going to be coming from the applicant to his attention.
Because the grades are on here.
Yeah, the existing topals are on.
The existing topals are on here.
He wants the proposed.
See.
So he's asking for it, but it's on there.
He says, this is who you want to propose.
He's saying the,
Propose in the basin. I think he said he only had proposed for the basin and not the rest of it, if, if I remember.
That is what it said.
If I remember what I read.
No, we can't find it.
Except for the proposed, it's number,
Oh, number three.
I think what you,
Requires that the proposed topography be shown on the plan, the proposed topography. The plan only shows existing topography except for the proposed drainage basin.
So it's like meaning like, what is it going to look like after it's built, like?
We're not changing the grade.
Okay, so then I guess.
So it's just going to show it.
Yeah, so this is, this is the actual grade.
Put the notes on the plane.
Right, exactly.
Or one of those seven-layer, um, plans that show now and tomorrow, correct?
Yeah.
Like, why we could do one that says, does that make sense? Is that, is that?
I mean, he could do it all.
Oh, no.
That's the elevation, that's the elevation, that's the elevation.
Yeah, I totally do. I mean, like, show it again, stating that that's what's going to be the final elevation, like, so I understand they are going to be, but, so a note on the plan, then.
That's what I'm suggesting.
That they will be.
The bottom line, and it's easy.
So you want to have it say, existing and when it's the same elevation?
Yeah.
Just exactly what he's asking for.
Does that make sense?
The bottom line, and it's easy for me to spend your money, you really need to take it back with that letter to your engineer.
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm going to hand this right to him, and he's going to go, yeah, this is here, that's there, what do they want?
That's how it usually happens. When it comes back from, uh, from Mr. Brennan, it, it goes back to the engineer, and he,
I understand.
And he said, item number one, check, done. Item number two, and then puts the answer to what it, what Mr. Brennan is asking about. So that's, uh, other than just reading it in, into the, uh, into the record, it's easier just to, hey, thanks a lot.
Showing you what I see as we're reading it, that's all.
Number eight, a test hole is required at the location of proposed drainage basin to verify soil texture and depth to seasonal high groundwater. Number nine, proposed sizes and type of drain pipe should be specific on the plan. Uh, number 10, proposed catch basin should be specified to have deep, deep sumps and gas trap hoods. 11, the proposed surface covered behind the north and between the proposed buildings should be specified on the plans. 12, some of the existing pavement will need to be removed for, for construction of the larger proposed building. The limit of pavement removal, uh, should be shown on the plan. 13, the area of proposed disturbance, uh, will be closed to a one-acre threshold for applicability under the stormwater management bylaw. Webby should provide the area of proposed disturbance. Please give us a call should you have any questions. Very truly yours, Patrick G. Brennan. So that's would be the best thing.
Phone number.
Here the thing, I'm sorry?
I said he didn't leave his phone number. It was a joke.
Okay.
You were going to say something at, um, proposed, it's been a long night. Proposed catch basin should be specified to have deep sumps and gas trap hoods. I feel like you were going to say something on that one.
Yeah, you would need, uh, you would need that for the ones inside the building. I don't think you need those for outside drainage.
If he asks for it, he wants to. I don't know how else to explain it to you. Mr. Bailey, also our, uh, former building inspector, for site plan review, building seemed to be in the appropriate zone. Individual use of the building may require further relief, depending upon what type of business will occupy them once built, which seems similar to cleats next door. I know during our previous meeting you had spoken about they're just going to be used for storage.
Your vehicles, yeah.
Yeah, the vehicles, yep.
Uh, Peggy Salter from the Board of Health, Board of Health needs further narrative description information. What are the two buildings going to be? How many bathrooms are there in each building? Uh, what is the total design flow? The installed system holds 800 gallons per day. Kate McPutt, who's the, uh, I believe she's the conservation agent.
Yeah.
According to Mass Mappa and the provided site plan, it does not appear that the work is taking place within 100 feet of the wetlands, so. And the, uh, the deputy, uh, police chief, uh, Theodore Benner has no concerns or comments at this time. So I would suggest doing just that. In the hold of Mr. Webby, uh, bring back, he usually, he's usually very thorough, goes right down the list, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, check, check, check. This is what we did. This is what it is. It's,
Yeah, and if he has to give you another detail, then just prepare.
Not a problem.
He's very good like that.
Yep.
If I were you, I'd get a fire truck sweep, too, because the 12 feet between the, um, existing building and one of the new buildings, just run that by the fire department, because I don't know if they can get through there.
Oh, it's 10 feet, so.
Okay, well, well, I'm just saying, run it by them, have them do it all, because.
Yeah, you're better to get it done up front than to deal with it.
So what do I need to do? Go to the fire department?
Just show them this.
Yeah, show them that, that's all you have to do.
Because this is enough for him.
Actually, you know what? We'll do it. Danielle, can you please send this, um, site plan over to the fire department so they can verify the sweep? Thank you very much.
I would recommend you do it. That way, if there's any interaction, any conversation, you're there.
Yeah, you're right.
So fire chief?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mike, what's his name? Mike?
Withers.
Yes, nice.
Well, he's not going to get a fire truck in between the two buildings, I mean,
Yeah.
but that's the, the law's 10 feet, so that's why we're going by the law. So it doesn't matter if he says no or yes, I don't think.
The law's 10 feet for combustibility. It isn't necessarily for fire access. That's why you need to talk to him, just to make sure he's cool.
He needs to be able to sweep around the building. He might even want to figure out how he's going to sweep through these, and it would be good for you to know now. Not like sweep, like with a broom, but like the rotating of the truck.
The 10 feet is fire separation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a different thing.
We have gone through that before with turning radiuses and all that fun stuff.
Exactly.
Okay.
So do,
I'm just going to write it down exactly the way you want me to ask the fire chief, so I,
Just show him the plan, see if he has any comments. We're doing that, too.
Just continue to,
Well, what are the dates again on this one?
Show him plan.
I don't know, what does it have to this here?
Oh, I have the application right here. Hold on. Oh, no, this isn't.
That's, that's the next one.
Do you remember what day you applied for this?
Off the top of my head, no.
Well, let's just do an extension.
When was our first meeting?
Well, I know the 30 days was going to be up between our first April meeting and now, so we're getting dangerously close.
If we extend it tonight.
30, 45 days, what do you guys think?
Yeah, just, just to,
Will you give us an extension for site plan of 45 days so that we can make sure that everything gets done?
Another 45 days?
We're not going to say.
Well, we might not use it all. We just need to make it, we have to have an extension out of our process.
How long does it usually take? 30?
You want to do a 30, and then if we need more, go from there?
When's the next meeting? Can we do that?
May 1st. Yeah, but we just need to make sure that we have an extension because we think that we're dangerous.
Here's our dilemma. If we don't do a, an extension, we have to give you a no.
Yeah.
And that wipes you out for two years.
Okay. So, yeah, I want an extension. Easy question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So you can, even if we gave you, so we'll just do a 30-day extension to make you feel comfortable, and then we might need to readdress it at the next meeting, depending. Is that okay?
Yeah, it's fine.
So, all right, I'm going to make a motion to, um, extend PS PR 25 dash 2, 350A Industrial Drive Site Plan Review for 30 days.
There's a motion on the floor to extend, uh,
Second.
The motion in a second. All those in favor to, uh, approve the extension, say aye.
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 Unanimous.
You could very well,
And in the meantime, yeah, you can get this done real quick.
Yeah, no, it's fine, yep.
Yeah, so May 1st is the next meeting.
So that's my next meeting, May 1st?
Yep. And then if you sign this, that would be fantastic. It's signing your entire life away. Um, just right here. Thank you. And we'll sign it all now, and you can take a picture of it if you want. Or I can make a copy in the other room. If you prefer. Today is the 17th of April. Thank you, Bart. Okay, we'll, we'll all sign it and give you a copy, okay? Well, actually, it's, um, you did it in your name, not Newcomb's, right? The petition. Did you write, Paul? Okay, so some of this needs to be filled in, but, um, I don't have the, May 1st, 7 o'clock.
Thank you.
We tried to get you out of here before the hearing, but, um, we weren't allowed to based on hearing, sorry. Yeah. We had to hang out on it.
Okay, let's go into, uh, other business.
We would have done that, except that we specifically said the hearing started at 7 o'clock for that.
That's why. Sorry.
Let's, uh, move right into, uh, PS PR dash 25 dash 3, 539 Plymouth Street, Site Plan Review, submitted on 4/16. That's, you guys are up.
Did you want this in?
Just so, uh, just, just for information for the, uh, planning board, uh, the applicant here has already been to the zoning board of appeals. It was a, uh, commercial business allowed in the cur, commercial district, and that's basically what he went to the, uh, went to the zoning board for. This was, uh, submitted on, uh, 4/16 25. So my question to the board is, uh, I don't, this hasn't been advertised or anything, I guess, or are we just going to discuss it? Is that what we're doing, or?
Yeah, we've got to discuss, because I talked to Port Health, um, now,
Yeah, we gotta discuss, cause I talked to Port Health, um, now, um, what's the girl's name? Conservation. Um, Conservation, maybe.
Sir, can I have your name, please, and your address, please?
Somewhere on the round, uh, 539 Plymouth Street. I'm looking to put a nursery and plants and plants over there. And I went to the, the other zone and they sent me over here. What I'm trying to do, I, I might need an engineer plan. Right now, I want to have, I don't know, you guys have this?
Okay, by the way, this, uh, 359.
The last time, I moved.
539.
I moved the shed from the front, cause I have like 300 square foot shed in it. When I go to do the spec, like, I did it small, so I don't need to go to more process, you know what I mean? And I did a 300 square foot shed. First, I put it in the front on where the post office is. Now I move it, like, sort of middle of the bushes, so not be attacked to the street or look bad at you. And I put where the post office is, I put some big green giants. I know it's already buffered there, but I put some green giants to kinda block so nobody can see the beans and everything else.
Just so everybody knows, 539 Plymouth Street is, this is the Bosworth House directly across the street from, uh.
The police station.
From the police station. So if you're standing on the front stairs and looking on the police station and looking down on Plymouth Street, the house would be almost directly in front of you. This is the lot beside it, between the house and the.
Post office. And police cross the street.
On the post office side of the street.
Right. Are you aware that this is, I believe it's in the historical district, if I'm not mistaken?
I have that right here, hold on.
I'm pretty sure.
I think it is too, now that you mention it.
Yes, it goes from, uh, from 105, uh, the Biscayne property all the way up to Colette's Kitchen.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's. The only thing that would probably be, the issue is how the shed looks. But how many feet back is the shed now?
Um, before, I have about 50 feet. I can put, you guys tell me, if you guys want the shed to be 60 feet?
No, I, I think the, the thing, I don't think it's a big deal.
Yeah.
But you're gonna have to talk to the historical people. I don't know if you can get your hair cut here in town, but John the barber is on the historical commission. If, if the building was further back than 300 feet, then there wouldn't be any.
I'll put 300 feet.
But, you know, you may not have to.
But I, I want to go easy on this as I can. If I have to go 300 feet, I'll go 300 feet.
Well, I'm, I'm not telling you that's gonna be a problem. I mean, it's a shed, I mean, unless you.
I just like, this is. We're talking about 300 square feet, 300 square feet.
Yeah.
And I can make it nice as you want, you guys want. I'm open to suggestions. I put the driveway there so I don't have to, we don't have to cut the curb, no special permit. Is, is 40 feet entrance, we got about, close to 65 to 80 where the crosswalk is.
Yeah.
And across the street, they have two entrances, like, one on one side, one on the other side. I'm gonna have down one, but big enough.
Yeah.
So cars can come in and out. And, and now it's gonna be on gravel. I'm not gonna put recycled asphalt, I'm gonna use three-quarter stone to drain the water. Then that's why it comes to Conservation. They want, she wants to, me to make plan with, uh, she said, depends on the media tonight. Depends on the media tonight, you might have to make a plan with, uh, with, um, the engineer. Did this.
The engineer, Stan?
You see, I have, yes, I have this when he did it, like, as a commercial.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, you know what I mean? Then if I have to do it, I'll do it. I, I try not to, but, um, we have everything there, you know, but, um.
That's all it is.
Yeah. Yeah, this thing's been configured in a bunch of different ways.
Yes, yes, that's why.
When they were trying to sell it, they had all kinds of configurations.
And I'll do everything you guys tell me. I don't want the shed here, I want the shed like 400.
No, I'm not saying you have to do it that far. I'm just saying they.
This is why I put.
But just because it's in the historical district, you have to at least talk to them.
And I have the other ones who look the other way.
That's the whole stuff, you're right.
The shed was on the other side, and I say, you know what, let me put it on the side of the house, on the middle of the bushes, so.
So, yeah, no, I, I get it, you know, I get it.
So what is this, what is a nursery?
Yeah.
Congress Street comes out.
You're just basically gonna have some.
There's so many, so many.
Greenhouses and.
Yes, yeah, I'm gonna plant some plants in the back and I'm gonna do some big plants on the front, you know what I mean?
What are you gonna have besides, uh, plants? What else are you gonna be selling?
Uh, gravel. I might sell mulch, I don't know yet. I might not. We have to see something.
And, and then, and then what?
Just mulch, gravel and.
Flowers, plants?
Uh, small flowers. No, no, no small flowers, just like bushes and.
Shrubs?
Shrubs, you know what I mean, more like shrubs. Cause Nazarela's down the street with the small flowers. I don't wanna, like, put a small flower, something he has. I probably, what I can do is I can buy from him and put it in mine. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, cause he's got the greenhouse.
Yes, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna, because he's in the town for so many years, you know what I mean, and he sell the flowers, you know what I mean? I wanna sell like bushes, big bushes, and if I need the flowers, I might as well just get it from him. The mulch, I'm, depends, I wanna talk to him and see. I wanna put mulch too, but I might see what me and him come out with some kinda, cause I kinda need it, cause I'm doing nursery, you know what I mean, but we see.
All right, so what do we need from this gentleman for our next meeting?
Site plan.
Yeah, a, a, a site plan with a stamp on it.
Yep.
Site plan with a stamp on it?
You should, um, of course, the building inspector's not here anymore.
Tuesday. The interim is coming Tuesday.
Okay.
I just met him this afternoon.
What I was getting at is you, you need to review the bylaw to see how the historical district applies to you. I'm pretty sure you're gonna have to talk to him at least.
Yeah, he will.
Oh, you've talked to Ed Bailey?
Yeah.
Only today or tomorrow was his last day.
So he won't be here tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
So this is a necessus map, right? Well, no, this is actually, this is actually done by Webby.
This is.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, that's only part of the law.
Webby did this map, the one I have, Webby did this map and I did that landscape architect design.
Oh, wow, you did.
Yes, yeah. She, his name is right there, this is what he did for me.
Okay.
Yeah, but if I need a Webby, I need a Webby, I'll, but.
Well, though, I think that the reasoning would be that we need stormwater management, conservation.
No, but that's why. I'm okay to go through the conservation, that's why Conservation sent me to talk to you guys.
Yeah.
And I can, you guys can say, okay, but you have to go through Conservation.
But there's parking.
You're, you're not paving anything, so that.
No, I'm doing three-quarter stone, you know what I mean?
That's huge.
Yes, and I'm not doing.
Parking for a business and customers.
Yeah, it has to be reviewed.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Lighting.
He's got parking.
I have lighting in.
You added the trees since the other night on the side.
You see, that's why I did that, yeah, that's why I did this here. This is, I add this in, it's already buffered there, but I add this in so buffers more where the parking space is gonna be.
I can see that difference, yeah.
And then I changed the shed to be here.
Yeah.
So that way, nobody's.
Oh, I see what you're talking about now, yeah.
Like, the house is here, okay? If we can put, she can put a shed behind this house.
I see.
Then I move the shed kind of aside the house behind here, that's like maybe 60 feet off the street.
Right.
Electricity, plumbing, is it gonna be bathroom?
No, 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 it's gonna be porta pata. It's right here too, I put here too. Porta pata bathroom and electricity, she already has a post from the city on the, on the land, kinda, next to it. I'm gonna have that one run and I'm gonna ask for electricity for one more post. I put here too.
Do you have copies of these? Do you mind if I take copies?
You can have it, you can have it.
Oh, we can have them?
You can have to put all that on a plan, so.
Yes.
Yeah, that's gotta be all on a plan.
Yes. So you can tell me if I need a Webby or don't need a Webby, cause this is landscape architect design. I can have him do me the drain, he, he know how to put a drainage system, if we need it, but this is something.
So you need to do like a full site plan? You went to a local engineer and you said.
It's gotta be stamped.
Okay.
But I was just gonna go a little further, I thought it might help them. So if you go there and you say that you need a site plan, then they'll do everything that they, that is necessary for a site plan, um.
You can use that one just.
Yeah, 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 you can use that as a guide.
Yeah, exactly, but it'll. Well, we have to see measurements from like.
It's a measurement, yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's gonna be the scale too.
Yeah.
The engineer will know exactly all the stuff that you need.
So. Site plan requirements start here and if you want, do you have a phone, you can take a picture of that or I can make you a copy?
By Webby, no, correct if I go to the meeting.
No, you can, yeah, Webby, I'll help you.
You know what I mean, just writing all the plan and everything.
Yeah, well, he's, so he's gonna know, but if, so if you just say, we need.
Yeah, I'm just gonna go.
He knows how bylaw, so he, if you give him just that without going through, cause there's more pages of the bylaw.
Yes.
But he'll know, so just say, "I need a site plan to go in front of the, uh, planning board."
Yes, what's the next day I can?
So once he makes the plan and you fill out an application with the building department, then you can get onto our next meeting after that, I'm sorry?
You have to go back, cause I already went to building.
Well, yeah, so he's gonna help you, well, actually, the planning board are, um, secretary and somebody will help you fill out the site plan application?
Yes.
Or Joe Webby might.
Yeah, I'm just saying, Joe probably doesn't.
So, yeah, they'll, they'll help you through that process.
The same one, I just figured out for this one, correct?
Ju- just, just to be clear, you don't have to use Webby, but.
Yeah.
Where he's done the work.
Oh, to be clear.
That would be the smart move, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just, I didn't want anyone pushing you or pushing him to.
I'm not pushing an engineer.
I, I didn't think you were.
There's tons of engineers.
I know, but he knows the plan already.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree, I just didn't wanna make it sound like you had to go.
Right.
I was gonna say, um.
So he'll help you, so you filled out an application?
I already did, I already did.
Oh.
Yes, I already did.
Oh, okay.
So, so, so we're on the clock.
We're on the clock.
How could it be on the clock if we haven't, if it hasn't been?
Well, it isn't, we don't have everything we need, but we're on the clock.
No, but it hasn't been, uh, proposed, put on the newspaper, hasn't been.
Well, that doesn't happen for site plans.
Does it, no?
Yeah, it doesn't.
I did for that, I did for the, for the, I sent bottom list for everybody in town.
Yeah, that, that was because of Conservation, yeah.
Yeah, I sent a bottom list, what I'm doing, I said, before, before I went to here, I went to the other meeting the other day, I sent a bottom list for everybody, noticed by everybody on the town.
All right, I guess let's take it.
Yeah. You should talk, talk to the, uh.
I'll get the engineer in as soon as I can. I just did a, like, I need a day to come back and I'll make the engineer.
We can put you on the agenda for the first of May, right?
Want me to make a motion?
That might not be enough time, but we can put you on for the first.
But not, can you reschedule?
Yep.
Yeah.
I appreciate it, yeah.
Talk to the building inspector's secretary and find out how to contact the historical commission.
Well, when we send the site plan, then he produces a.
Send it out, but I'm just gonna say, if he gets to them quicker, he can kind of speed the process up a little bit.
So this, this started ticking yesterday, so we're not far along in this. Yeah, I'm just making sure everybody's aware.
For his sake, to kind of speed it up a little.
I just have to go back to her and say, like, the historic, what, how.
Yeah, just how do you, uh, contact them?
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome, we'll see you on May 1st.
May 1st.
You want a, a motion?
I'll make a motion to have SP.
I move we put, we reschedule this, uh.
Yeah.
To the first of May in our next regular schedule.
PSPR-dash-25-dash-3539 Plymouth Street for site plan review.
What she said.
Pending, pending plans being in our possession that are.
Okay, a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second, uh, call for voice vote, uh, Amy?
Yep.
Myself, yes. Tom?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Uh, passes unanimously.
Just for clarity, you are the owner, right?
Uh, no, the owner is not here today, but she, she, she's pregnant.
Okay.
We were brought up to the other meeting the other day.
Okay, I, I just wanted to clear that up, cause I wasn't sure what we were doing here.
Okay, last, uh, item, uh, meeting minutes for, uh, Thursday, May, March 20th, 2025. I looked through it myself, I don't have any changes, corrections, additions, or deletions. Anybody else have anything to add or?
I was okay with it.
You're good? Rick, you good?
I haven't even gotten to read them because I was concentrating on reading the zoning bylaws.
Okay.
But, you know.
All right, I'll ask for a motion then regarding the minute, meetings of Thursday, March 20th, 2025 as presented.
Moves.
And a second?
Second.
All right, uh, call for voice vote, uh, Rick, Mary? Tom?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And Amy?
I'm staying.
Okay. Passes three to zero to one. Bingo.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion on the floor to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, people.
I'm gonna make a motion.